Twenty-one and a arm of the board is present. State Board of Education meeting of August 13th, 213 is called to order. Maybe we'll go right to public forums since we were running a little bit late after the morning anyway and not have our guests. Guests are welcome to stay the whole time, by the way. We're usually here till 10:11 at night. Please feel free to stay here with us.
I currently have two forums. If anybody has any extra, I'd be happy to have them. The first person to speak is Kristin Walden-Grattan and the second person is going to be Mary Wood. And as Ms. Grattan's coming to the table, I will remind you, speakers, that you'll be given five minutes of time. It'll be up here on the counter and board members, as a matter of their practice, do not carry on a conversation at the board table.
I have some flyers for you. One side is a network and one side is me.
Whenever you're ready to begin, we're ready.
All right. You may begin. My name is Kristin Grattan. I'm a National Board Certified Teacher. I'm a reading specialist. I teach at North Hurleyus Elementary School in Mason, Michigan, and I'm a reading instructor at Lansing Community College. So I teach reading for the little ones and the big ones. And if you need to learn how to read, it's the same no matter how old you are. But I'd like to share you, I'd like to tell you a story of great success and to tell you in five minutes or less, how a state-funded initiative called MyBlissey, that's the acronym, it stands for Michigan's Integrated Behavior and Learning Support Initiative, has been, we're going, at our school, we're beginning our fifth year of MyBlissey. I'm wanting to tell you about how it's been in action, but I thought I could have a colon or how data collection and evaluation changed teaching, learning, and conversations about both in our school. The quote that I really want you to think about this year, we've already been at school getting things ready for the end of August, but we're so excited about this year. "The new schedule with a common literacy time for grade levels creates so many possibilities for teaching." I heard that last week and it's really exciting to hear it because it's sort of the, I feel that now because of the training that we got from MyBlissey, we're moving forward and we're being able to make a difference in the learning and the behavior of the kids at our school. We've been able to do this because MyBlissey was designed to be a self-sustaining kind of professional development, school leadership model. And we went through a new principal, a new psychologist, a new social worker, eight new teachers, and we were able to still, our leadership team, we were able to tell them the tenants of MyBlissey and to share what we've been learning and to make a tighter team that works with kids. The thing that's happened in the last year is that we decided we needed to have more transparency. As we're evaluating data, it's very hard to get 28 people together to look and make decisions. So we thought this year, we instigated three new committees, a reading committee, a math committee, and a behavior committee that meet monthly. Different members of the staff, they're smaller and they can talk about problems that they see, come up with solutions and action plans and put them to work immediately. One of the things our reading committee noticed is that the problem that we're having is that we just didn't have a common time where everyone was teaching literacy at the same time. We were told, oh, no, it won't work. We have too many varied schedules. We have too many special teachers who come out for one morning or afternoon and we can't do it. Well, we had a volunteer group of about eight teachers, an art teacher, a music teacher. We had all the requirements for the schedules and in two hours, we came up with a schedule that meets everybody's needs and all the grade levels have a common 90-minute literacy block. So because of that, teachers are so energized for the summer thinking, how will this change the way I can teach students? How can I collaborate with cross-grade and grade-level people so that we can make sure that all the kids that we teach can have the same quality of, the same success? We're very excited and I know that you have invested a lot of time and money and research in MyBlissey, but I want to tell you that speaking from experience, from a teacher from a school in Mason, that we see that school-wide decision-making without MyBlissey is like going on a trip without a map. You're in the middle of a thing and you don't know where to go, but MyBlissey gave us a map to chart our journey. Thank you very much.
Come back in June.
Yeah, I will, with data.
Yes, that'd be great.
Kristin's also a valued member of the network of educators and really appreciate you taking the time to be here.
Thank you.
It's great that you've worked out that there's always a different network person here trying to keep us up to speed on some things, so thank you very much.
Thank you, and I wanted to talk to you about a state initiative that we've been making work.
The next speaker is Mary Wood. Mary, if you'd please come to the table. Whenever you're ready, we're ready.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Mary T. Wood. I live at 27533 Santa Ana in Warren, Michigan. I'm here wearing two hats. I've kind of diversified myself. Even though I want to retire from charter schools, I found out that there was something else calling its name for me. So first off, let me give you an update, though, on charters. I did check up the new updated posting for charters that were going to be opening for the fall and what struck my interest here was Baldwin Community Schools was authorizing Mosaic Online Academy in Michigan. I just so happened to go to the Henry Ford when they had the Maker's Fair a few weekends ago and, whoa, what fortunate timing for me, but I got to meet the CEO of Mosaic in person. They are soliciting this new online school. Now, I was really curious to find out Baldwin Community Schools, who were they? So I looked them up on the Internet and found out that they seem to be a quite homey kind of niche of a small community school district that takes quite pride in what they're able to provide for their students. Maybe, I think, I think if anything, it just had a couple elementary schools, if maybe only one, a middle school and a high school. I inquired up here at the department to find out, why would Baldwin Community Schools authorize online Mosaic? And I was found out, found out that currently the superintendent of Baldwin had formerly been as an employee of Mosaic. So isn't that convenient that now a former employee of this management company now is working in a situation where he becomes the authorizer of his former employee? Well, I was up here now for, to further in depth, I looked up another charter school that's of interest to me. The Roamine Group is a management company. He's opening up another charter school in a former building that occupied a charter that relocated, close to my neighborhood, and I found out that he, his people was actually applicant and one of the board members was a 12-year employee of Trillium Academy, again, a management, a school that's managed by the Roamine Company. So here we have a board member who is a former employee, in fact, probably just quit employment with the company to become a board member, who's now overseeing her former employee. I just feel that these situations are just a little bit too cozy, conflict of interest, that's kind of borderline, but it doesn't make me feel real confident that the proper oversight is really going to be happening at that, at that board level. I just want to let you know that I've diversified into now watching the EAA. It's very much like a big charter school. What we have here is an 11-member board that's been handpicked by the governor that has dropped down in place, who've got absolutely no board training. They're now our two years into this and I'm letting them know what they need to know and I'm calling them out on it. So as, as long, along the way, they violated the Open Meetings Act of the kazoo. They have been stalling on freedom of information requests and what they're currently doing now is offering these bill-performing schools an opportunity. Up to 1,000 junior and seniors will be able to acquire up to 60 credit hours in their new program, basically a dual enrollment, that they are cooperatively working with Henry Ford Community College and Wayne County Community College. Now, we're talking about kids that are down in the bottom 5%, who could barely maybe read past the third grade level, but we're offering them a program, or these students a program, that is far out of their reach. In essence, what they're trying to do, from my vantage point here, is recruit more students into their system that really aren't performing at the lower level, but they're giving them an avenue that they can go through the EAA to acquire this fast route through college. This was a comment that I read, read off from Senator Hopkem's website in regards to the FOIA's that he had been putting out and corresponding back and forth because of the delay. A teacher had said, "Last week, I met a guy who works for the EAA. He didn't tell me that right away. He sent, he said he was a consultant in the education field, working in Detroit on behalf of some California business group." Well, I do need that, I do know that the Broad Foundation is operating out of California. When I asked if it was the EAA, he reluctantly said yes, not knowing that he, that I had, that he had been talking to a teacher. Then I said, "So with the EAA legislation, they can take the bottom 5% every year, no matter what?" And he said, "Yes." And then I said, "So that means in a few years, if the EAA keeps absorbing the bottom 5%, they could really take over schools that were initially in the top half of the state and they could take over public schools that actually outperform the EAA." And he responded with a smile, "Yes." So I come here with a caution to everybody here who's in charge of public oversight over our, our public schools. There's a big plan in place, we all know that, but we need to have a lot of people ask a lot of questions and hold peoples, people to their accountability in the role that they, they are responsible for. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe these are some late colors for audio participation.
While our guests are filing in, is there anyone currently seated that wants public participation?
Okay.
There's about three more elevators full.
There's a familiar face. Yeah. Right, why don't you, Merz, why don't you get some forums that folks have and we can start? Mary, or this isn't response to Mary, because we don't do this, but I did want to clarify for the record, at least from our point of view, that we've been very, I've been, I'll speak for myself, very forthright about the fact that the bottom 5% will not automatically go to the EAA. Those possible schools will become somewhat self-evident when scorecards are released later in the month, but I, I'm not doubting that that's the way others are projecting it, it's just that that's not going to happen. I mean, it's going to be a relatively small number that aren't showing growth and it's certainly not near the couple of hundred that would be on, on a so-called automatic end. And I just thought, because our audience, sometimes we don't know where it begins and ends with the Internet, that that would be worth clarifying. I mean, I don't even have the data yet fully, but I, I bet it's a dozen or less. And then secondly, I think I'm going to turn Sally Vaughn in, because she just texted me and I think that means she's watching. So she can pretend that she's happy in retirement, but I think it means you're watching. That's sick.
There's better things to do.
Right. That's not really very. And welcome back, Mary Ann. It's good to see you.
Thank you. A pleasure as always.
Yes, ma'am.
Pleasure to see all of you. I'm here today to introduce the parents and students and community members saddened and outraged at the closing of their school, the Oakman School in Detroit. It's a special needs school and the school was specially constructed for these children, has a number of special accoutrements that they will tell you about. They are going to tell you what the closing has meant to their children and to their families. The school, as I say, has met their particular needs and helped these children advance into meaningful and enriching lives. The school's been open since about 1930. They are going to tell you how their lives and needs have been also cast aside by an uncaring, arrogant man with too much power and no background in education, much less for special needs students, and how his actions have viciously disrupted the lives of others in his charge. They probably will not tell you, however, about how they've overcome personal fears and set aside their everyday routines in order to fight this proposed closing. They have stepped up on unusually strong, in an unusually strong show of bravery to do what they know is right, and that is to prevent the closing of their beloved school. So with that, the ones who are willing to talk are willing to talk.
Can I collect some more forums from some people?
How are you? Good to see you all. Did you come up on a bus?
We'll just let everybody get settled here a minute. Okay, and the speaker is Helen Moore, am I correct?
You're correct.
Okay, and we're ready whenever you are.
My name is Helen Moore and I represent Keep the Vote, No Takeover, the coalition of 24 organizations in the city of Detroit who stand for quality education for all of our children. I got involved in this situation with Oakland closing. It's not the first time a school has been closed, but this is a unique situation and my granddaughter attended this school in about five, six years ago and she's now in Schoolcraft College and they said she would be a vegetable. She has cerebral palsy and she's a very, very, very good student where she is. And I thought that it was important for me as a grandparent and a parent and a school activist to come and talk to all of you about what is really happening. You may say, well, we're in the wrong place, but we're never in the wrong place when it comes to children. And these children are unique. They have special needs. They need doctors, they need nurses, they need people to change their diapers. These are not all the children. Some of them that couldn't walk are not here, but we are representative of the students that are at this school. My basic concern is this, the school did not have to be closed. We're talking about $900,000 and every time a school closes in Detroit, it means that sometimes millions of dollars are lost. You've got all these boarded-up schools, you've got schools that are really in a neighborhood that is trying to thrive, but once the school closes, the neighborhood goes down and that's what you see in Detroit. You blame it on all these other things and all, all the things that's happening, but when you close a school, you kill a neighborhood. This school is sitting right in the middle of a neighborhood with no schools. If you go over there, you will see what's happening in that neighborhood that we just left. I just met some people that were taking out the computers and the books and et cetera and I asked them, could they kind of slow this down because we're not finished, we're not going to stop fighting until we get that school opened up? Why? Because we did go to the other schools that they're trying to send our children to. Noble and Henderson School, they're not prepared for our children. And once we went over there to see the school and we took the children with them, one of the schools, which is Noble, has gang activity. When they saw our children out there, the gang came out and they started arresting our children. We were there, we saw this. They left with our children, they grabbed their signs and they tore them up. Would you put your child in a school that is not sensitive to the needs of children such as these children? They are normal. They are normal. They're children. They just have special needs. But when other children see them, they began to treat them differently. In their school, all the children are treated the same. They have children that are not special needs, but they all honor each other. The school is full of parents that come every day and it's a school of a lot of love and a lot of fulfillment for the children's needs. They do everything. I've been there. You should, you should go to Oakland. It's been in existence for years and the reason it's in existence is because of these children and their needs. It's unique. Why would you close a school down for $900,000 when it's costing you almost that much to supposedly repair the schools, the two schools, and get them ready for the children? Doesn't make any sense. I say keep the children there, make sure that the school does not close, and then everybody will be happy. The whole city will be happy, you'll be happy, and especially the children will be happy because they are free, they feel good about themselves. Look, look at them. You don't see anybody running around acting a fool. All you see is children that are, have special needs and they are here to support themselves. Their parents are here and we're here. We love our children, we love our school, and we want you to help us keep that school open. And you can because it works, the grades are good, everybody's doing fine. If it ain't broke, why, why fix it? So that's my whole speech, okay? And before I go, I got to give you a Bible thing. Remember the story of Joseph, those of you who read the Bible. Remember what his brothers did to him? They tried to kill him and they sold him into slavery. But when Joseph forgave his family at the end, what did he say? What did he say to them? When Joseph rose up to be the governor of that particular state, he said, "You meant it for evil, but God meant it for good." And so who made this decision? Meant it for evil, but God means it for good. No way can you treat children like this and it not happen for their good and for their sake. So thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Cynthia Lowe and following her is Dunamis Archer.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Good afternoon. Again, I'm Cynthia Lowe and I am a community activist. I live in that neighborhood. I have been there for 40 years. I've seen many changes, but this school is special. My sister, who's two years older than me, she attended that school. She had a bad heart, a bad heart when she was a young person and they bussed her over to that school and she would come home and tell us about that school. There was children, there were burns. They were taught when you come in the door, if you see a child different, she didn't look different, she had a bad heart, so she looked normal, what we consider normal. And she was told, you can't make in front of these kids, you can't say those things to them. That school has always been like that. When you walked in, it's a special atmosphere. Now, I'm retired. I retired from the city of Detroit. So in 2010, they asked people to come in and tutor their little four-year-olds so they would have an early start in reading. So I volunteered to do that and I went up there and I walked in one of the classrooms to tutor the four-year-olds. Two of the children in the class had tracheotomies. One little girl walked on her legs or something. Other children were disadvantaged, but had handicaps, but they were not treated any differently. I have never, ever, and I attended all public schools, seen a school where nobody picked at anybody, where everybody tried to help. The little four-year-olds were taught to help the other children. These children that come out of this school is special because they learn to help each other, they learn sympathy, they learn to emphasize, empathize with people who are not like them. It's the, I've never seen anything like it. We're closing a jewel and I'm quite concerned with the fact the community was not informed of this. The way this was done, we were just, our rights, I'm a taxpayer for 40 years, they just overrode our rights. Nobody is talking to us. This situation here, we came down here and spoke with you, this is the most help we've got, you know? We don't want that school closed. The community needs, that school needs to be there. As I understand, when that school closes, there's signs around it, there's certain things you can't do around school. The police come quicker when there's a school in the community. Once that school goes, that whole neighborhood is going down. It, it just affects the whole community, but especially the education of the children. I saw the children, I tutored little kids who were learning to read and it just was a loving experience and I, I come here with an open heart. I want you to understand that there, when you close schools, there are people, there are people behind what you're doing. There, I want you to see our faces, see our faces and understand that we were not told this was going to happen, we didn't get a chance to put our input in, our school is just being closed. And I don't think the school is in that bad a condition. I'm looking at other schools and I do know for a fact, Durfee and Noble have a lot of fighting. I have never heard of a fight at Oakland. I don't think anybody has ever heard of a school where there's no fighting. There, you don't hear about fights at Oakland. The children, see, are taught to love each other because they see people who are different and they're taught to work together. That is not like that at Noble. Those children, and they're going to be segregated, just like back in the old days where the children, or you were different, you had to go to a different school. You didn't look like everybody else, so you were put in the back corner somewhere. It's a lot of things going on there that I'm quite sure all of you didn't know and you weren't told. I'm quite sure the residency manager doesn't know because I, I think he's just getting information from one, one part, he's not getting the whole story. And I just come to you with an open heart and ask you, please, help us save that school because it will save the community, it will be good for the children, it'll just be a blessing all the way around. And thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for coming.
And our next speaker is Dunamis Archer, followed by Cynthia Caldwell.
Okay. Thank you. Hi, I'm Dunamis Archer and I'm a former student of Oakland Elementary School. And my concern is the education standpoint. I have been here since I was probably about, hmm, maybe 12 or 13 now and I've never been so advanced in my life from their education. I have never been challenged in a way to where I really am using my, my, you know, and they let me be independent, you know? They don't, they, like, they treat me as equal as anybody else that goes to that school. And I just cannot see it closed down. I consider that my home in so many ways. And as I look back at all the memories that I actually have, it's been great. And they just challenge me to keep on doing what I had to do to make the grade. From when I really wanted to read without pictures, they actually took every, like, picture book that I had in my class and they took it out and they gave me actual books without any pictures. And they gave me a time limit so I could read. And even though it was hard, they said, they gave me encouragement so I could keep it on doing what I had to do. And I was very appreciative for that because I never knew that I could do the things that I was capable of until I went to Oakland. And it's just, I don't think you guys know what you are doing if you close this school, you know? And I have had so much determination by staying behind at that school, that I went to another school and worked off and like really worked all night and day until I got in my right grade and I could say, "Dah, in my right grade," because I was on my studies every night and day. I could honestly say that I'm in the National Junior Honor Society. I have been nonstop on the honor roll, so there's nothing that I could really say that's a negative thing about Oakland and that I cannot see this school closed down for anything in my life, but just knowing that Oakland has laid a foundation for me to keep on doing what I had to do to make the grade. the grade. And that's all I pretty much have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cynthia Caldwell, followed by Aleah Moore.
Hello. I speak from my heart as a parent of Oakman students. I have a child that's 10 years old. I came to Oakman bringing her from another public school that was a prominent school in Detroit, but they could not accommodate her because she's a self-contained cognitive seizure, a lot of underlying problems. But as a whole, when I walked through that door, when I, the principal greeted me, the first thing I noticed was a child with no legs. She was crawling across the floor, working her way to her room. That is a self-sufficient school that teaches the kids to be very independent. My main concern is, I took my child from a prominent school, brought her to a school, the other school she was in overlooked her. I sat in the class as a, as a volunteer parent and watched these teachers just walk around my child like she wasn't there. Took her to Oakman, she went from not able to read the word "duh." In a year and a half, she was reading on a second grade level. They take interest in their children, educational. I was told by a, a teacher when I first entered the building, it happened to be my child's first preschool teacher, she said, "I want you to know, this principal over here run this place like an army. She does not allow any teachers to neglect any of these kids." Okay? I like to say this, my child, I adopted two girls. I wanna give them, they already started off wrong. I wanna give them a better life and the only way I can do that is to try to put them in the best place I can. I found a place that worked very well with all these kids. My child Ben, she's 10 years old and she's been in five schools. She started in a school for the deaf. She went to Harding, they shut the school down. She went to Ann Arbor Trail, one of the better schools. They told me I can't accommodate her. She went to Jayma, May Jamison, they shut the school down. She went to Oakman, you're shutting it down. They wanted to send her to Derby, um, Derby. I went over there yesterday to visit the school. One of the security guards told me point blank, "You don't want your kid to come here, especially a special needs kid. This school is dangerous, it's violent over in this area, which the neighborhood is very poor." So basically, I'm telling you from my, my firsthand experience, that school would be the worst, worst educational harm to take that school away from these kids. They thrive very well. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Aleah Moore, followed by Mayua Vang.
Hello.
Hello.
Um, let me first say thank you for the opportunity to come to the meeting. Um, my name is Ms. Moore, I'm the president of the parent group at Oakman Orthopedic. Is he asleep?
What?
Oh, I was saying, he was, I didn't know he was sleeping. Um, but just to roughly give you a brief, uh, description of what's been going on, our emergency manager, uh, was Roy Roberts when he came in on April the 10th and announced that Oakman would be closing. Uh, first, Oakman has a population of about 315 students and about 40% of those students are disabled. So we're talking the cerebral palsy, uh, spinal bifida, uh, severe brain injuries, colostomy bags, severe seizures. We have everything in that school for our kids already. We have the nursing infirmary, physical therapy stations, speech therapy rooms, everything. It was built for our kids in 1928. Um, Roy Roberts came in with no respect whatsoever. He pulled the welfare statement on us and I guess trying to relate to us, I don't know how, but he said he had been on welfare and also we're not having black babies like we used to. Those were his exact words. And he also threatened staff by saying, "When the media is called, that's when people get laid off." And the whole closure was under secret. It was just a big secret. The announcement all the way up until now. And we feel very disrespected as parents. Uh, we have been riding by Noble and Henderson where they wanna send our kids to. They are doing absolutely no renovations, but yet they tell us, "Oh, everything will be ready and equipped for your students by September." And since DPS has been calling parents, customers, we have absolutely no customer service. It's not like we have not tried to reach out to the former Ja, uh, uh, I'm sorry, Roy Roberts, as well as the new Jack Martin. And we have not gotten any communication. We also sent a couple of letters to Governor Schneider. We have not gotten any, uh, contacts back. He told, uh, Ms. Mildred Gaddis, the radio personality on the radio, that he would look, uh, look at it and check it out, he would come visit our school. He has not yet to do that. And, um, it's just, uh, our school was being closed on lies. I brought a packet for each one of you and I would love you to please look at it, it's very brief, very short, but we were sponsored today by a 91-year-old alumni student. He heard about the closing and he offered to, uh, get us transportation to come here. So this is a very important school. Noble is one of the schools that they wanna send our kids to. It currently has 550 students and they have open asbestos. We took pictures and that's in part of the packet and they have mold. You go in the building and it's a, a, an instant smell of mold. That will destroy our students because a lot of our students already have immune deficiencies and the problems with their immune system. And I'm not just talking about our, uh, special needs too, I'm talking about students in a whole. That building has absolutely no reason to be open as of now. And at Henderson, they currently have a population of 917 students. So our small group of kids, 315, are going to go in these environments and get destroyed. They're going to be tormented, teased, uh, bullied, picked on, and they're going to be put in an isolated, uh, facility because our school, our kids can go anywhere. They can go in the greenhouse, they can go in the auditorium and perform on stage. Both of these schools, the kids will have to be on audience level because there's no renovations. And everything that they tell us is where they're assuring us. Everything is assuring, but we have no facts. We have nothing in writing on timeline of repairs. We have absolutely none of these things. And we are, we came up here today because we need help. You guys may not be able to reverse it, but you can put pressure because it's time for people to stand for what's right instead of compromising just to make money. And these kids are our future. And if you say you love our kids and you care about our kids, whatever nationality, whatever disability that they have, they are our future. So everyone sitting in this room can do something about this. Regardless of if you cannot reverse the decision, you can put pressure on people that can do it because we did not come up here for nothing. Because we are getting totally disrespected as parents in Detroit. And, uh, you know, the media portrays Detroit people do not care. We care about our kids. We have parents, fathers, that come to our school, not just drop off and keep going, come up, they're active, and we just need help. So that's why we came up here today and I would love for you to take our packet and just look at it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mayua Vang and I'm sorry if I'm saying your name wrong.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna beg your pardon. Uh, we're actually gonna speak about myself and a group where they speak about the education achievement authority and we wanna actually, that's the Oakman Board, I just presented first, so I will bypass for Oakman parents.
Okay. Dr. Tom Pedroni, is he here? And he's going to be followed by Janaya Wayne.
Hello, State Board of Education. Thank you so much for giving all of us this opportunity to speak. I'm also gonna be speaking in relation to the intended closure of Oakman School. I'm an associate professor of curriculum studies and policy sociology at Wayne State University. What I wanna talk about briefly is the case that was made for closing Oakman and how none of the claims about the need to close Oakman have been substantiated. In fact, there's significant counter evidence. Um, the outgoing former, uh, emergency manager, Roy Roberts, stated in one of his last statements in April, when the district was laying out a new strategic direction, that he had recognized that the closure of schools dozens every years was actually a mistake and as we call, he called it a plan for failure. And we were happy to hear that rather than closing 28 intended schools, he was only gonna close four. He mentioned the heaviness with which he announced even those four schools and said he took it with utter seriousness because he realized the impact on the neighborhood and on the children and so on. Of those four, as you've heard, Oakman was one of the four. I seriously question the seriousness of his decision. Um, and I will tell you why now. Uh, the reasons that were listed, and this is from the DPS site, these are all documents that I have and that I will share by e-mail with the, uh, State Board after this meeting so that you can see them yourselves. Um, the claims were three, that the building had $900,000 worth of maintenance upgrades, that the building had declined in enrollment by 50% since 2009, and that the building was, only had 288 students officially with a capacity of 446. I'll take those claims in reverse order very quickly. The first one is about the alleged decline of the student enrollment. The statement was made that, uh, enrollment had declined by 50% since 2009. Well, it's very easy to go on the DPS website and to look at the actual enrollment figures since 2009, actually going back more than a decade because they're all posted there. And what you see when you go there is that in 2009, enrollment was 270 and now officially it's 288. It's been above 270 every year since 2009, including this year. So, so much for the seriousness of the claim that part of it is this 50% enrollment decline. The next piece is the piece about capacity. Uh, it's stated in the official rationale that the school is only at 50% of its capacity, which is listed as 446. Well, the first thing one notices is that 288 is actually 65% of capacity, not 50. But even more troubling is that when you look back at capacity, going back to 2003, that in 2003, the capacity of the building was listed as 290. They're currently officially at 288, unofficially above that. If you go with the 288, that means the school is at 99.3% of capacity according to the 2003 rates. Since 2003, there has been no change in the size of the building. There's been no change in the program of the school as far as the grade levels or the mix of special education to regular education. In fact, I interviewed leaders at the school who told me in no uncertain terms that they had never been consulted about the increase in capacity and couldn't defend why this, this capacity was changed from 290 to 446. All they could do was speculate. We went through and we calculated how would they likely come to the 290 and they're at 288 now. We used ADA guidelines and that's exact, Michigan State law, that's exactly what we came to, was 290. We tried to speculate about where they got the 446 from and it seems to be a very crass calculation of the number of classrooms times a regular education population for each classroom according to the district's guidelines. But where that leaves us is that the school, at least according to, uh, guidelines, using a combination of Michigan State law for students with disabilities, as you probably know, POH high students are limited 10 to 15 per teacher, to only 10 in the classroom at once. Um, so a combination of that and looking at the state's limits for regular edu, or the district's limits for regular education classrooms, which in the past year was 33. If you ignore the POH high limits, you can get to the 446 number. Otherwise, the school is, uh, very close to full capacity right now. The third matter is the $900,000 worth of alleged maintenance needs. The staff at the school dispute that. Now, because I was so alarmed by both of those latter two claims, the enrollment one, that it's declined 50%, was very easy to disprove. But the other two, for the capacity, the argument that the school is only at 50% of capacity and the argument about the $900,000 in maintenance needs, I filed a Freedom of Information Act, uh, request with the district. Actually, first in late May, I contacted the spokesperson for the district, Steve Wasco. Never heard back from him for over a month. When I just asked in a friendly way, "Is this still currently the rationale and can you kind of explain where the $900,000 came from and why capacity is listed as 446 currently?" Over a month, no response. So I filed a Freedom of Information Act claim. After three weeks, and I'll share these documents with you because I have them, I got back a two-page FOIA after the legal amount of time that a FOIA is allowed to be fulfilled. A two-page FOIA, one line on each page. The page in response to my question about capacity, I had asked, "Why was the capacity changed from 290 to 446? It increased over 50%?" The ans, the answer was a one-line indication of the current enrollment of the school by grade. Had nothing to do with the question of capacity. The second page also had one single line and it was about the, it was in response to my request about, "Please delineate the $900,000 worth of maintenance needs." It was a single line that outlined the year-by-year operating costs for the school. Had nothing to do with an itemization of maintenance, uh, concerns for the school. So what I wanna do in, in finishing is to say that the reasons that were given to the parents have not been substantiated by the district at all. The very fact that the district would respond to my FOIA request, which is a legally binding request with two pages that had nothing to do with the question asked, that had one line in each, says that there is a problem of accountability, a legal problem and also a democratic problem of accountability. And I think that's why the parents are here today, to speak with all of you. Because I know that your response may be, "This is an issue of local control," and I'll, this is my last paragraph. I know that your response may be, "This is an issue of local control, that it's up to the district and they should be the ones to handle it." But we don't have local control in Detroit. There is no state, no Detroit board with authority that can listen to parents' testimony and if it so chooses, do something about it. There is no elected Detroit board that can be held accountable through votes where we say, "Okay, great, don't listen to us, but we're gonna try to get you out of office next time and put together people who are more responsive to be on the board." There's none of that. The emergency manager does not hold public sessions in which this type of testimony may be presented and is not accountable certainly to democratic elections by the constituency that he affects. That's why we are coming to you as the State Board, because it is not a situation of local control. And there's somewhere where these parents need to change in light of a decision that was unwarranted and is very hurtful to one of the most commendable schools in Detroit. And I say that as a professor of curriculum studies who is himself a teacher educator. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Janaya Wayne, followed by Lester Hunt IV.
Ms. Janay Wayne will be speaking about the EAA, so we'd prefer to not take time from the Oakman parents if they can go first.
Lester Hunt IV.
Before I start, I'd like to say, um, good afternoon and I'd like to say that, um, thank you for allowing me to come here today and speak with you. Um, today I'm here to address the issue of Oakman closing. Now, before I read my passage that I wrote, I'd like to just say that Oakman has been a very incredible school. They have a unique staff there and they have helped me a lot through my ways, um, as the, as being there. And now I'm in the Honor Society at my school. Uh, I'm a grade A student and I'm getting very good grades and all the, and I would like to thank the teachers and everyone there that helped me out. Now, this passage I wrote about Oakman, about why you should keep it open. It's not very long, so. Hi, hi, I'm Lester Hunt, former student for Oakman Elementary. I'm here today to address the issue of Oakman closing. Now, Oakman has been open since 1929. Many, and it's been open since, ever since my grandfather went there, my great-grandfather went there. Many are highly upset and disappointed because of, because one of Detroit's local neighborhood schools is soon to be closed again. Many parents don't know where to send their children. Teachers will be jobless and neighborhood children will be sad. Just think, most parents have students that need, have special needs and the nearest two schools are not like that. Some parents have to worry about, worry about their child's education, but I say no, no parents should have to worry about their child getting a decent education in a safe environment where, in which their children can learn. Imagine you are a child who goes to Oakman or went there and you have to walk two miles every day just to get an education. No child should ever have to go through that. It's bad enough that the city is messed up itself. Now, you don't need our children to be messed up. Yeah, I just, just wonder how nervous a parent would have to be every day praying to God that their child gets, gets to school and has a safe day and will be able to come home and say, say, "Hey, Mom, I had a nice day at school, no bullying, no nothing." And that's hard to say because these two schools are much like that. Bullying, bullying, bad, harsh environments, and I can't say more because it's really messed up. Some don't have a car and so they have, they have to have their children walk to school and just think, the, in the cold harsh winters of Detroit, in Detroit, seeing, seeing their children. And just think, in the cold harsh winters of Detroit, seeing, seeing their children, seeing children walk through huge piles of unshovelled snow. Now, that's just sad. Detroit has spoken, now it's time for us, the people, to speak out. And that was a very passage to me, because for, because I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for Oakman helping me out, get my good, get an excellent education. And right now, I'm not, I'm not in a DPS school, but I'm in a charter school. And I think that the emergency manager, Roy Roberts, he was really rude at the meeting, because he most, he cut most of the people off. And I really didn't like that, because he cut one of my answers, one of my questions off while I was speaking, and he didn't answer correctly. So, I would just like to say that Oakman is a really good school, and I think it should stay open. Because where would the most, where most people who need special needs go? And so, I would like to say thank you for your time, and I hope you like my agreement.
Our next speaker is Jerona Smith, followed by Vanessa Wright.
Good afternoon. I come today as one of Oakman's employees. I'm a teacher at Oakman. I've been teaching now 12 years, three years at Oakman, and total of nine years for Detroit Public Schools. I can't tell you how full I am today. Because I came up here not, you know, listening to the left side, the right side, people saying, "You can't support, but if you do not stand for something, you will fall for anything." These children at that, at our school, they deserve a good education. They deserve for people to come out to the school and realize what kind of gem that school has to offer. We've been to the two schools that they plan on sending our special needs children to, and those schools are not equipped and they are not ready for what we have before us to make sure that the children, the educational harm. It's educational harm to pull a child from a place that's being, they're being nurtured, they're being cared for. Every need as far as their educational capacity is pushing that child to the next level to reach their educational goal. It is a nurturing environment, because every person in the school, parent, teacher, that bridge is being gapped. And I know in a lot of the districts around the state of Michigan, you may can say that the same thing is happening. But Detroit has been in and out and around. You see it on the news all the time. We need some stability, and we need people from here, from Lansing, from this capital, to realize that the buck stops. It should stop here. We can't keep closing schools that are good schools. We have a program, a Success for All program. The children excelled at that program. It was brought as a pilot program in our school. The children read above, and any other pro-pilot schools, we were the highest. We also wanted to go green. There's so many beautiful things about our school, and people don't look into our school and realize that. I start with pre-K. I'm a pre-K teacher. With special needs children, I bust at, from pre-K, age three. I have three and four-year-olds in my class, all the way up to fifth grade. There's children who have catheters. There are children who, in fourth and fifth grade, they still have to be, go to an area where they need, they need to be changed. They'll never be able to change. There's no changing rooms. And what do you tell a fifth, a fourth or fifth grader? If they go to a school and that school is not equipped for them to go in and take a depend off and put on and take care of themselves to put another depend on. There's children that they won't ever physically or psychologically be like the other children. And this school offers that. It offers an environment where they're able to feel whole. And that's what we're here for, isn't it? To create an environment where each and every child has a feeling of holistic wholeness. It's not being offered. There's no way that we would be filing in Detroit for bankruptcy, we'd be doing all these things if there was stability there. But this school offers that. You have to hear the cry of why we came, as far as we did. I don't think about my job. I think about the cause. And people, as of last night, called me, my work colleagues. "Don't go up there. You shouldn't do it. It's considered the blit whistle blowing. They'll get rid of you." But you have to believe in something, and you have to trust in something strong enough to try to make a difference. Because if it's not now, it could be your child. You never know how fate may have it, where it could be your child or your grandchild or even your great-grandchild that'll be faced with these same issues. Please, I tell you from the bottom of my heart, support us. We did not come all, all the way up here to not be hurt. If there's absolutely anything that's born and the constituents and the people who support the Michigan Board of Education can do, please let us know. I love this school. I love the parents. And again, the cause is why I'm up here. I'm a certified teacher. I can go absolutely anywhere and get another job, but these children have no one to speak for them and no voice. Where do you go from here? Where do you go? And I just want everyone to know that, again, the supporters and the people who have supported us up to this point, one thing that I've heard them always say is that it's in God's hand. It is in God's hand. But we have to step out, because God helps those who helps themselves. And thank you so much for having me.
Our next speaker is Vanessa Wright, followed by Alfred Wright.
Hello.
Hello.
I attend Davis Aerospace Technical High School. My school is closing as well. I have been gone there for three years. I'm in flight training. So, like, we have a hangar, and like, soon as you go out the hangar, we have the airport, which is the city airport. So, now that our school is moving on Jefferson, we have to have transportation to get back to the school, which flight training is an eighth hour. So, we get out of school at 3:15, and then we have an hour of flight training and leave at 4:15. So, we won't be able to come back, back and forth. Like, kids who doesn't have rides, they catch the bus. We won't be able to transfer back to Davis to go to the airport to have our flight training. And certain students that have eighth hour, they have academics all day, but now that they changed our schools, we have to have flight training all day and miss out on our academics, which is not good, because we need the academic classes to go to college and get our transport. Our school is moving into a bad neighborhood. They're combining our school with a middle school, which isn't good. Kids, I'm sorry.
Take your time. That's okay. We're good. You're doing great.
Okay, now we have to buy our flight tools and stuff. Certain kids can't afford the flight training equipment.
Why don't we, um, why don't we, we'll turn off the time and take, take your time. We're good.
It's okay. Thank you. Certain students are scared now, because we have another high school, but it's closed. So, like, they're safe where our environment is. Because our school is across from Catterton High School. Now that students, like, we don't have another high school around us, so we feel safe in our environment now. But now that we're moving on the bad side of the city, certain students doesn't feel safe. And certain students can't afford to go to Davis Aerospace anymore. So, now that we're moving, we, we're afraid to speak up. Now, that's why I'm here. I'm happy that my dad brought me to speak in front of you guys, because I was scared. But certain students are scared to talk, like. They're afraid, like, what we say doesn't matter. It all depends on our parents or the government or Roy Roberts. So, they scared to speak up and say they want to keep the school open. Kids who want to be in robotics can't afford to be in there. We have fundraisers at our school, but now we can't have fundraisers, because they say it's certain laws. And we have to save the money for books and things. So, now, we can't have certain robotics or engineering anymore. The only thing we have now is just flight training, which they're trying to take away from us. And that's the only thing kids look forward to, to come to Davis Aerospace. That's all.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Alfred Wright, followed by Darius.
Good afternoon. I apologize for my daughter.
She'd be very proud of herself.
After that, that kind of changes things with me. For me, I'm a parent that two of my children are being affected by what's going on in Detroit. My other son goes to Oakman. He has cerebral palsy and asthma. As you already heard, my daughter goes to the aerospace school. And I look at it from both sides of things. Until you have a child that needs special needs, you never pay attention to the life that we go through. So, I'mma understand and look at this board as, I don't know whose parents and who's not. So, on my side of it, through my parenting group and everyone that came through Detroit, I'mma also let you look at things through the eyes of a contractor, because that's what I am. I'm licensed to do special things, which is gonna be required to fix this school that they want our kids to go to. Prior to us finding out our school's gonna close, and after that, we have digged, tried to do everything that's needed to be done to combat what's going on. You've already heard and been exposed to many of the lies that have been wrought against us. So, since we understand our governor is about money, this EM is about money, we're gonna talk about the money side. Because you done heard enough emotional things, and I need to get away from the side my daughter just got on. Let's, let's take this $900,000 for instant. We haven't seen the work, but as a contractor, I've had the ability, through this wonderful school, to participate more and more. Unfortunately, I didn't participate as much with the other kids as I had with Timothy because of his special needs. But going through Oakman allowed me to be a better father, because now I understand on both sides. Because I have six other regular children, and then I have the one with the special needs. Through this school and assisting and learning through him and all the various other kids we have in there, it, it exposes you to a new light. Just like I would've wished y'all all had the opportunity to come down and see the school for yourself. That's what we offered to the board. That's what we offered to the governor. So, since I can't see this $900,000 worth of repairs, I decided to go through the school and see the school as what I needed to fix and what would be required. It's approximately $150,000 worth of work that needs to be done. That's not just repairs. That's preventive maintenance. But since we are in this green economy now, if we upgraded the things that needed to be upgraded in our school, made them green, they would never have to be replaced anymore. We're, we pretty much talking about PECs. We talking about different urinals. We already know ours is set up for all ADA. Now, the security measures that they are talking about, which is a part of this $900,000, we don't need that open. When you come to Oakman, you coming in the door that has no metal detectors. You coming into a school that has never had a problem since I've been there. My son has been there since pre-kindergarten. So, the next side of that is, I cannot talk against any other contractors. But I want you to understand that when even you hire a contractor, there are several factors that go into your bid. One of the factors is the work that you want required, the materials it take, his labor, and any expenses it covers to do everything lawfully, permits, everything else. Then there's this other thing called overhead, where we gonna pay enough to make sure all our overhead is covered, everybody is paid, and then there's profit. So, I made a joke prior to us really getting deep into this, was what I said was, "I can do the work at the school for $450,000." I can do the $150,000 worth for everything that's required, pay everybody, hire everybody, and still walk away with $300,000 profit. So, if I can do it, I'm quite sure whoever offered them that this work needed to be done for $900,000, that's what's gonna happen. Now, let's look at it from the other side of that coin. These two schools that they're sending to, Open Asbestos and everything, I inspected those schools just like I inspected ours. None of the schools are ADA-ready. So, if you're gonna take $900,000 and close this building that needed it, it's gonna cost you twice as much to do those two things. But then there's also the transportation cost, where they were only transporting 40% of our kids, because they're forcing us to move. Now, they have to transport 100%. So, therefore, if it costs us $1,000 per student to ride the bus, you just escalated 60% more expenses. And that's every year from now on, until they go to those other schools. For me, my son was only gonna be in Oakman one more year. So, now they're gonna be responsible to transport him to wherever else he was going from five to eight. Any of those other general A kids that wasn't riding the bus, now they're gonna have to transport them for that same length of time. Or any of the kids from first grade on. So, you calculate that $1,000 per year for the next amount of years they're gonna be going to these other two schools. So, whoever is you presenting that to, then make them actually show you the numbers. Let's see the projection. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Darius, followed by Victoria Dat. Darius, do you want someone to come to the table with you, or do you want to sit there just with you? Okay.
Hello, good morning. My name is Darius Johnson. I just want to say that I had went to Oakman School when I was seven years old, and they taught me a lot. And it's just not fair to shut the school down and all the other people that want to enjoy Oakman School. So, I just want to say that it's not fair to close it, and people, other people want to go to the school, and they want to learn, and they want to do different stuff. And that was it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darren.
Victoria Dat?
Victoria Dat is here to talk about the Education Achievement Authority, so we're gonna go in if the Oakman parents finish their concerns first.
Okay. How about Ola Wayne?
Ola Wayne is likewise going to talk about the Education Achievement Authority.
Okay, that's where we are. Janay Wayne also is that same?
Are the Oakman parents done with their time to speak, because?
Yeah, there's no more.
There's no more. Okay.
May I have your name, please?
I'm Ola Wayne.
Okay.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I'm a, I'm a parent that is concerned for the Oakman School. Oakman School is in my neighborhood, and I'm also concerned about them closing it. Being, working at social security, working with disabled kids. A lot of their parents have come, and I've seen and heard the success from Oakman School. I'm here also to talk about the EEA school. My granddaughter goes to an EEA school, Monford. Monford has a problem getting the records from the Detroit Public School. I know that because she's going into the junior high school, she's going, she's a junior in high school this year. They need those records to be able to determine what to do, what to, how to help them to get into colleges. I work with the LSCO, and for one year, the whole year, we were trying to get the records for the seniors so that they could, the councils could help them and assist them in getting into schools. I was in the office, and I've heard that they got, finally got the records for the seniors that graduated. One, one week after graduation, they finally got some records. The council tells me that it takes a year for them to get those records. I'm saying, we need the EEA schools to give our students what they stated that. the reason they opened the EEA Schools, the better our students' education. And I'm finding that it's not happening. There's a breakdown in communication all the way around, from the state to Detroit. It's a communication problem. They, I went to the EEA, I mean, to the Education Nation, and we got, we heard a whole lot, I heard a whole lot of promises from our governor, from everybody, saying how great the education system in Detroit is. It is not. It is failing. And I, these are our future that we are denying. A great education, trainings, they're cutting out the vocational tech classes for the kids. The industries are saying that they need those, our kids, when they come out of the, out of high school, some of them won't go to college, but if they went through Voc Tech, they could be, they could go into some of the jobs. We are asking that industry be able to come in and help to educate the schools, educate the kids so that they will have jobs if they don't go to college. We want our kids to be prepared in, through the counseling, to get into the best colleges, be to get the best education that they need. And I am a grandparent fighting for our kids. I had a son who's in special ed, so I'm, Oakman is dear. Because I know how it is trying to get a kid who has special needs, you have to fight all the way for them. I thank you.
Thank you.
Victoria Dat, please, followed by Mayu Vang.
Hello, my name is Victoria Dat. I was a student at Monford High School. And before I start, I would like to say every student in this room, every child in this room is the future, and so are y'all children. I just want to read this little essay that I wrote. I titled it, "Students Are The Future." Is justice always served to students as it's supposed to be, as in education responsibilities and everyone's future? Honestly, justice cannot be justified until the, the party is satisfied. In this case, the party is students. Students are not really satisfied in Detroit, Chicago, New Orleans, Boston, and many other cities. All get treated unfairly, schools are being closed, for what? The city and even the mayors don't know why. These schools are up and running and doing very well. The city is running out of money and still afford to pay public figures and cops who just sit there, eat doughnuts, and arrest young black men for walking down the street. These schools really need more money, more books, real teachers, and all that money is being used. A school is supposed to be a place that is safe, not duck and dodge the bullet. A learning environment is not teach yourself or learn what you can. Why are schools being closed? We don't know. We, the people, do not know. Good schools are gone, and the money they could have used to keep it open is gone. Some of these students do not have a school in their neighborhood to go to. And this, the program that I'm in, which is called EAA, is supposed to be like DPS, and it's supposed to be better, but it really isn't. It makes me feel as if I was not a student. It makes me feel like a number in the cell block, which is where they're trying to, well, where, I think they're trying to make us go, because if they're not teaching us well, where else are we going to go? We'll either end up in a casket or in jail, which is what most of people say young black people end up anyway. It also... I also think that this should change before times come that elder lady could get robbed in front of the police, and the police will give them a thumbs up, because they won't be able to do anything, because there'll be too much crime to take care of. EAA is not a good, as good as it, as they say they are. And they come to y'all, and they tell you, "We're the best, we do this, we do that," but we get nothing at all.
Mayu Vang?
I'm going to respectfully say like mine to our last student.
Which is Janaye Wayne?
Hi.
Hello.
First, I want to start off with, education is important, no matter who you are. You could be special needs, or you could be regular. It's still important. Like, we're the future, all, all the children here are the future. And if we don't have a quality education, we won't be able to make the future how you want it to be. We won't be able to stop the crime from happening. She got to travel, like, all the way out of city to get to school, because they don't have bus stipends to get her there. That makes no sense at all. We, I didn't learn nothing really until, like, November, because we had too many people in our classrooms. They couldn't figure out what they was doing, everything, nobody knew what was going on. It was just crazy. It makes no sense at all. Like, we running out of time. I'm in the 11th grade. If they don't fix this, I'm going to be in the 12th grade and trying to go to college and don't know what I'm doing, because I don't have a quality education, and I won't be able to compete with the other people out there, and I won't be able to make something myself, and other people won't be able to make nothing of theirself either. Like, if this continues to go on, it's going to be, like, our future is not going to be very bright. Like, it's not. We're going to have crime everywhere, people, like, the buildings and everything is going to be run down, because everybody want to go everywhere else instead of stay in Detroit, because it's nothing going to be here. Like, if you want it, want things to get better, you got to keep the education and stop closing the schools, because the children need the schools. If without the schools, where we going to go? Where we going to learn? That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Vang, you're not speaking?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, and does, are there any other forms? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, and the board doesn't interact on these, but takes these, the thoughts that you've brought to the table into consideration. And I guess I could, oh, maybe one issue that I would mention, it doesn't mean it's limited to this, that we would want our, our Special Education Division to at least see if the schools that, the kids are supposed to go to. We can't, as some of you inferred, we don't decide which schools are open and closed, but we can and should be understanding that the other schools are ready, and it sounds like that may be...
They are not.
A question. So, that would be within our purview, and I think we need to do at least that, and then some other things as we debrief. But thanks for your taking the time today. It's always great to see the kids that we actually serve, these young people. And thanks for the parents and others to take the time to speak to us today. You're welcome to stay. We only go till about midnight, we said earlier.
One of the schools that they're born to, Noble. My granddaughter was in Noble, and I went up there for two days to sit all day to see what was going on. The assistant principal and three other teachers came into the room trying to control the classroom. The teacher in the room had, the kids were throwing books, pushing chairs, cutting off lights, just uncontrollable. And for those two days, I sat there and I looked and watched. The third day, my granddaughter was in another school, because they could not control those children. And that kind of, I know that kind of, if special need kids, I'm telling you, my blood pressure went up. I went to the doctor to get some more medication, just sitting in those, that classroom for two days. It was that horrible. And I know that Oakman kids do not need that. If I'm old as I am, was upset after sitting in the classroom for two days, what will they do for the, for the hundred, hundred point, over 120 days? How many days is it?
180.
Hundred and eighty days. There will be, there will, there'll be, they might have a heart attack. That's what I feel like after walking out of there.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you all again. Okay, we'll go, we moved up public participation to accommodate our guests, and so, let's go back to 6E, which is approval of State Board of Ed minutes, the Regent Committee of the Hall Meeting of June 18th, 2013. First of all, is there a motion?
It's moved.
By Cassandra, support by John. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same. We have a, a new employee, and I think that Carol's going to do the introduction, and we always want to welcome those that have joined our team here.
Thank you, Mike. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Eunice Morelli. She's with the State Library of Michigan. And Eunice, welcome to MDE. If you'd like to say a few things about yourself and your present.
Thank you, yes, hello. I must confess, this is the first State Board of Education meeting that I've attended, so this was very enlightening, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I'm Eunice Morelli. I am a MEL internet librarian, and I've given you all a bookmark. MEL is the Michigan eLibrary, and we are the premier online source of information. Everything you need, everything you didn't even know you needed, is at MEL. I encourage you to go to MEL.org. Specifically, one of the portals you will find is MORE, the Michigan Online Resources for Educators. Wonderful, wonderful tool, includes curriculum, standards, lesson plans, everything you would need. Our other portals are health, business, jobs, kids, teens, books and literacy, government, and legal. And if you haven't visited MEL, please do so, and if you have any questions, you can contact us at MEL.org at the Library of Michigan. One last sentence, I'm brand new, just started in July. I just ended 15 years as a reference librarian at the Capital Area District Library in downtown Lansing. So, I'm well-prepared, I think, to talk about library resources. Thank you.
Welcome, and thank you, and we appreciate your proactivity. You didn't miss a chance to pitch the good stuff over there, so we're good. John, President's Report. And if you want to pause, that's...
That's okay. No, wait, I'll talk about the Oakman folks when they get back in briefly. We're going to talk about the Deb Ball report in a minute, so I'll lead that off. Richard and I are going to testify tomorrow in the Common Core hearings and try to contribute to, not detract from, what I think has been a very encouraging process, really, the legislature's interest in understanding better the history and the potential utility and all the issues around the Common Core, and maybe disabuse themselves of some of the myths or fears, I think is, is hopefully working and proceeding. Your testimony, Mike, is excellent, and the departments, and Bill Schmidt, so Richard and I will certainly try to add to that. And I know we shared notions of what we might say. I'm going to talk about the historic, our role in moving the standards movement and our interest in why we support the Common Core adoption as a next step in that evolution towards the kind of rigorous standards. And Richard was nice enough to share his potential remarks, and they're going to be very helpful, so I appreciate that, Richard. Everybody else can come, but we don't have much time, and Wendy, thank you for helping facilitate that. So, there's probably not a point, but on behalf of the board, since we're rather complicit in advancing the standards in the Common Core, it's a nice opportunity. As we, as we talked individually, I wanted to at least note our interests and our movement in trying to move our priority of informing and helping shape a, the kind of comprehensive overhaul of school organization finance and the overhaul proposal A that we need to adequately support outcomes for learning. It was pretty clear as we began to talk to other stakeholders. The board, our putting together own recommendations for the big overhaul would probably be less impactful, meaning that we would be potentially perceived as one potentially partisan voice. And we certainly couldn't gather the resources to support the kind of independent, expert-led help that we all need to tackle this topic without us partnering on this important enterprise. And I certainly still am encouraging that I think, to the degree we can, work together as board, superintendent, governor, legislature, to charge the kind of thoughtful relook over the years ahead of how we organize and fund schools for success, that that would be important, and that it might be helpful to do such a thing even during an election year, when it could emerge post-election with some thoughtful ideas. So, I'll keep encouraging that notion, even though it may be politically hairy for others to consider, but I think it's, it's something we all need to work at. Meanwhile, we will take every opportunity to pursue the push on what kind of finance and overhaul of our school system is needed to better support it. And one good avenue is the bipartisan discussion group with Representative Rogers. Appreciate the department, and Mike, your all's participation in that, too, because I think we have an opportunity. Eileen and Cassandra and I are the committee that is joined with a bipartisan group of legislators to, again, go as far as we can towards understanding issues, where we are with school finance, what's driving our picture, what are some examples from other states of how they have done better, what are some of the ways we could advance the kind of overhaul of the system that we know is needed, including building in the kind of good ideas that Mike has been articulating with his proposals for how to better streamline and share services at county or regional level. So, I think we, we want, and we're, we have some help from the Educational Policy Center, MSU, in the form of some graduate assistants to try to digest analysis of what needs fixing with our school finance, what some of the big issues are, and, and we'll look at what other states have done. But then, we'll go as far as we can, too, in that group, to develop thoughtful ideas over the months ahead around what needs fixing, and what are some thoughtful ideas for how to overhaul this system? And that can be a contribution, an important one. So, I think we had a good organizational meeting. We're going to meet probably every month or so. September 5th is the next meeting of that group, and we'll have some private, but we'll have some public as we hear from other people, so we can have a candid discussion. So, that's a good avenue to pursue this topic. I was, I would say it's so important when people come, like the Oakman concerned citizens, and are seeking some public representation and, and having their voice and perspective heard. And I don't know if there's things that we might appropriately do in addition to what you nicely suggested, look at the facts of the case around the special education services. Certainly, if there's any appropriate communication we want to make to the emergency manager, to make sure he and they are listening hard, and/or if there are any board members who want to always facilitate, same. That's always within your and our purview, I think, to make sure that people's concerns and the information is being given careful consideration.
All said, thank you. Okay, I can get rid of a few of these. Probably saw the Washington Post being purchased. I couldn't resist a tweet the other day that if you want to ensure your extinction, extinction, cease to evolve. That came out of Jeff. That came out of Jeff, founder of Amazon, who recently purchased it. And I think there's something to be learned in there, that how do we stay distant enough ahead, but not so much that we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater here and not accomplishing what we hope to. Testimony on comment, I'm cutting through some of this because of the time today. The Common Core, thanks, John and Richard. I, Eileen's been active, as you know, and appreciate your acknowledging Wendy, Marty, the team here. But it means a lot that we're gonna have, um, in the best sense, a D and an R together tomorrow on this issue and very thoughtfully done. And even though I know they have a full agenda, I hear they're beaming someone in even who's not in favor of the Common Core, but will, uh, I am ravage, I guess, but I think this will be very helpful, so thank you for doing that.
Can we scramble the signal from that? Get our technology people on that one?
Yeah, we... Um, and then I just want to mention, you know, that as, as you know, this is that time of year, we're gonna be releasing the school report card. We don't have an exact date, but it's within the next couple of weeks, probably a little sooner. And as you, as you know from the presentation we had last year, the, this report card was adjusted so that we could receive the waiver. You know, and I found myself the last few weeks, I thought Vanessa and Chris did a excellent job in briefing the Ed Alliance on this, so they could help get ahead of it and bring up, them up to date. We probably should have invited them to the meeting when we met with you guys and had them sitting here more concretely, but the spirit behind it, I think the biggest takeaway was when it kind of hit them, again, we do this every day, but it hit them. Oh, that's right, this is instead of having the dire consequences of no child left behind, which were well-intended but unachievable, and this, this is what's required to do the waiver. Um, I really, the, the folks have had it in their hands for a while, so in the, in the field that they can get ready for some of the media-type things that'll be asked about. Um, and I think it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be well-serving the public. Um, the biggest change is the color spectrum that we kind of got to based on the waiver and it'll have everything from green, yellow to red, you know, and it kind of is meant to be kind of like a traffic signal, I guess, if you were to, uh, think about it that way. Um, and in case you, uh, in case they missed these board discussions last year, it's why we had the Ed Alliance in. I think, uh, we talked a little bit about this in an indirect way at lunch today. I think it's a good way to help people more quickly understand something so that they were all good by the end. They kind of got what we were doing and remembering why, and I think they'll be helpful with the field. As I said, just like, as we do with the MEEP scores, we've given them the embargoed results so they can begin working on improvement. First of all, some of them, this is, their teachers come in a week or so early, so that's a good opportunity for them to know the results of this. And, uh, you know, I think there's another, not just because Dan's sitting here, but there's other kind of ratings that I think are really appropriate and helpful for schools to look at. Dan's has a little more weight on climate, uh, of schools, which I think is very helpful for them to kind of weigh different measures. I think about it a little bit like if I'm ready to buy a car, you know, I look at a few different sources, or if you're looking at a university, you know, some, some count, something that's not particularly important to me, but some count the, uh, um, the endowment as a, a lot of points and others don't at all. And it's just a way that you can kind of see where, you know, Michigan State or Central or wherever might be in relationship to a couple of different measures. So we, we think this will be helpful and, and, uh, go from there. And I think, I think I can, I think I'm good. I know that Gary, as Mertz indicated, Gary Aboud couldn't make this meeting, not because he doesn't care, it's because he had already had the plans before he knew he would be Teacher of the Year, but he included a report, as you know, and I think he's gonna be a great addition to our work here at the table. And Marty's ready to join us. He's got, he's got Kleenex. I don't know if he's ready to tear up up there or...
I'd like to stay composed.
Yeah, woman, by the way, it is, I, that's another thing I think we should check out is what would be costs that the district shouldn't be covering, um, on, on the, the program she's in on aviation right now? I didn't want to get into the discourse here, but we should see what that is, 'cause there shouldn't, there shouldn't be any if it's a credit-bearing course. Um, and it shouldn't be because they can't afford it that they can't participate in it, so we should, I didn't want to say that and get too much engaged there, but I think that's a, another one and that's...
I think, I think part of the affordability issue is the transportation, that they, they can't afford to take a bus, uh, basically every day back and forth through the class. They don't have cars, they can't afford cars, so...
Cassandra, I can't hear you.
I was just saying, I think part of the affordability issue is a transportation problem.
Well, let's see, then, if that's an equal issue, that would be a hard one to, but I thought she, in addition to that, inferred a, a kind of a...
A cost.
A cost, and that's, that's not a, um, so anyway, I don't want to judge that yet, maybe that's not accurate, but we'll look into that. We'll also see if these other two schools can accommodate in a very short period of time now. They have to be able to accommodate without, whether you're for or against the movement of those kids, which we don't have much, anything to say about officially. We do have something to say that are they ready to, you know, with the proper accommodations for these kids' needs. We ran all, when I was a local superintendent, we ran all the Poh High programs for South Oakland County, and that wouldn't be easy to do overnight to get these ready. So I think that is a legitimate, uh, they're all, I mean, these are all legitimate issues, but that's a, one that I think we can...
Is, is the, these, the closure of these four schools that they're talking about, is that what's spelled out in their deficit elimination plan?
I don't know.
I don't know if they list by building, Cassandra, or if they just say closing one elementary, three of this, two of that.
Is the definition, deficit elimination plan a public document that...
Yes, it's on their website.
It's on their website, okay.
Yeah, and this is one of those nuances that, the question, I think, helps unpack a little bit is, I, I remember getting into this with Robert Bob, you know, suddenly I'm the one who was responsible for sixty kids in a classroom because we approved the deficit elimination plan. And unfortunately, um, I think you, in your legislative request a few years ago, said we should have a greater hand in the judgments on that, but we don't. It's kind of like if the bottom line fits, you have to approve it. And sometimes things that we wouldn't necessarily, or you for that matter, if you had that opportunity, wouldn't agree with, but that's the local control part, that boards who were elected, you know, appropriately get to make those decisions. But I, um, it'd be interesting to see if that's laid out. In this case, it's not a board.
That's right. Exactly.
That's not a board. But I, yes, sir.
Just on the, on the Davis, there's a case of where the building is being closed, but not the school. The school itself has moved to the Golightly Academy and maintained as a separate high school program within Golightly and then for administrative purposes, Golightly slash Davis Aerospace.
Okay.
Uh, but the original building was on, I think, near, at the airport and the other one is down on Jefferson, so that's where the transportation issue arises.
Well, we'll do some homework on these issues too and see what we, can maybe impact, but as I said, at least the accommodation issue, if, if it's, I mean, I don't want to jump to judgment on that, but if that's valid, that this gentleman who's the contractor went in and didn't really see movement, that's troubling, 'cause they have to be ready the day after. Dan?
Um, so I would love to dive into this a little bit more. I want to honor the commitment that everybody made to stick with the agenda and move it along. So I had, Luke and I were sidebarring here and, um, I think, I would, so I have four or five things in my notepad here that I'd like to say, but maybe when we get to the comments...
Yeah, that's a good idea.
...we can move to the legislative stuff and get to it.
Well, good, let's, let's do it that way. Thank you for that. Marty?
Hi, good afternoon. The legislature's obviously been out of session, uh, since our last meeting, so there's not a lot of legislation moving, let alone introduced. Uh, they've had a, a few meetings, as you know, as John and Richard are gonna be testifying tomorrow, uh, to the String of Common Core Subcommittee. And, um, and the House Appropriations Subcommittee's have been meeting just to get, um, a little more insight on a few issues, including adult education and consolidation, the hybrid plan. Other than that, nothing has been going on legislatively. As Cassandra mentioned earlier, we do have a Legislative Committee meeting on Monday. And, um, I don't know if you, if this is the point where you want to bring up and want to start discussing the, um, effective educator proposal recommendation. They are, we know that they are drafting legislation, uh, based on that. We don't know what's in it. Uh, nothing has been introduced, so there's nothing really to respond to right now except the actual report itself. So, you know, we can't respond to what's been introduced or what they have in mind, so I don't know what the pleasure of the board is.
Marty, to get at Kathleen Strauss's point about trying to start putting meat on the bones about where we are with this, what would be the likely timeline, and I know we always have to be cautious that things could be changed, but what would be a likely timeline for bills introduced and what they may accept within the report, what we may want to support in the bills, what we may not?
Well, it depends, obviously, when they get something introduced. Um, it could take several months, uh, to begin discussing this. Obviously, there are various sides of, the report was broad, it included a lot of information, a lot of recommendations. It'd be interesting to see what the legislators, uh, introducing bills, what they pick and choose from the report, what they want to put in there, what they don't. And then it'll be up to testimony, discussion as to what gets added, what gets pulled out through amendments and whatever. So I would, I would, I would be surprised if it happens before the end of the year. I mean, it's, it's that complicated of an issue.
John, please.
I think, I appreciate Kathy, and I wanted to talk about this a bit more anyway. Um, as the, the legis, obviously, this set of recommendations and how we effectively and supportively evaluate teachers and administrators is the key to doing tenure reform well. This, the process that, that was moved with Joseph and others involved representing Mike seemed to be one of those nice but rare efforts where, um, people felt it was thoughtful, sincere, the teachers' unions were involved, uh, feel supportive generally of the recommendations. Uh, Deb, as you, we forwarded, I forwarded the report to you all right away, and we heard from Deb prior to its release, 'cause the legislation, uh, this is a report and set recommendations to the governor, legislature and the State Board of Education. So I think it's really incumbent upon us to try to be proactive in, uh, saying what we think about the recommendations and what we recommend, what we encourage in terms of needed legislation. And when I met with Deb the day before, before the release, we talked about some of the major features of this report, and this is, again, what I would encourage, if it's a good process as a legislative committee, to talk about the major features of what's being recommended and maybe even begin to proactively name things that we think are important that need to be included in legislation and anticipate what we might not like if they threw some of it out. And as, as you know, if you've read the report, this basically, and Joseph can correct me, it, it provides a, um, a set of, uh, recommended evaluation observation tools that are of quality and one that the state would pick itself, and also a strategy for including student achievement growth in a bundle of, um, observations and other things that would be used to support the evaluation. I think a key feature of this is it does basically say, look, there needs to be resources attached to support the, uh, implementation of the basic evaluation tools and to support, not only, the department has a lot to do here to provide training and technical assistance, but there is, I think, significant, um, uh, needed resources to accompany the main recommended evaluation strategies. And there's a change too in the, in the ranking of the educators, you know, throwing out the advanced and have, and though, all those things need to be legislated and then resources need to be attached. And one of the issues that, you know, I certainly would have and be encouraging is, this is one area where, you know, the governor really did a good thing in encouraging the legislature to set up this commission and, as it was. And I hope that the governor's team is working with the legislators on the needed legislation and also the needed financing, uh, and being willing to support that. And that was something I immediately was asking, you know, Mr. Ruff, who isn't here, are you all, uh, going to be supportive of the necessary funding that's gotta implement this, because that to me is real important? So I would, um, encourage everyone just to read the executive summary if you haven't already, but then maybe Cassandra, if you're willing, you all could meet and begin to say, here's our perspective on this, um, which might be helpful to even be forwarding at our next meeting, but certainly as any legislation gets drafted to reflect upon. That's my two cents, or more than two cents, sorry.
Well, I like your two cents.
Hey, I'm making headway.
No, I would, the reason I brought it up is because the legislation does say that the proposed to be given to us as well as the governor of the legislature.
Right, and Deb said she views us as one of the more important customers.
To respond and give our reaction.
Yes.
And put our two, put our collectively two cents, maybe we can make it ten cents by then or so.
Yeah.
Uh, and maybe give it, before they finish drafting the bill, give them ideas that we think should go in the bill before it's all done.
Yeah. I mean, eight times two, it's sixteen cents, I think. So you'd be, but I...
But how do you get there? There's a lot of different ways.
There's a lot of different ways. Remember Deb Ball with the, I do think, um, I really like the way we're thinking about this, because if we're not proactive, and this is a little selfish on our part, but especially with maybe in bold print, that, let's say we agreed, endorsed and wanted to promote everything in that to be translated to legislation, and that's what, you know, I think Cassandra and the team would look at in the, first in the committee. But just for the sake of discussion, let's assume that was all well-thought-out, 'cause Joseph and Deb and I, I can, this is our biggest fear, that we're gonna get on paper great legislation and no resources to support it, and they'll be finger-pointing about why this isn't happening, or why this isn't happening with the kind of, um, oomph that it should be. So I really appreciate your citing that, John, and I think that's a good move. So does that sound right, that the committee would on Monday start dealing with that and bring it back to the board as a whole?
Yep.
Great.
Well, as John said, there are a lot of great components of the, of the recommendations that everybody, I think, can, can agree to. I think as, I think you mentioned earlier, the, the big rub will be that there are, there were a number of different tools, the different, um, evaluation systems that were discussed, and they're gonna recommend one out of them. And so that's where the time and the rub may be, is they have all these evaluation systems lobbying and arguing that they should be the one, and all these school districts that use the different ones, if they, if they happen to have the one that the, that the state endorses that's in law, then they're golden. But if you've been using one that's not, it's, it's on your dime. So that may be where the time and, and the struggle may be.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Marty. That's good to expand that thinking and, and Joseph, I know you've got your own issues, but if there's, if there's a way to amend your...
He does.
No, not that. Oh, yeah, that too.
You want to talk about that?
Yeah. But I don't know if your calendar, if your calendar can make that meeting, that would be great. If it can, it would be briefing Marty more on, you know, the resource you've been with so many hours there might be helpful for Cassandra's committee. And if not, okay.
Luke Bang has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So is the objective or their goal to implement this new evaluative tool in the fall?
No, it's for the, go ahead. Sorry. No, no, go ahead.
The, the recommendation is that the next two school years be built, be legislative and build years, operational implementation of fifteen, sixteen school.
So the next two years, the teachers suffer with whatever?
It's a, continuing with, with what we have so that we actually have time to build a strong system.
Which is pretty bad.
It's real bad because teachers are being laid off on the evaluative tool, whatever it might be they're using right now. And so that goes back to the evaluator. This is a crucial part. They talk about the teacher all the time, but they don't talk about the evaluator evaluating the teacher. And there's a big component, because many of those evaluators have not even taught one day in the classroom, and they're using all these different evaluative tools. So that's a big concern.
You know, we don't have an official role, but I've said in M.A.S.A. and other kind of meetings, if I were a local superintendent again, I would not be, uh, jumping ahead on this in terms of layoff decisions, until you had one that you knew was fair and, and otherwise, you know, so what would you use? Well, I'd use seniority for now. I mean, I'd use what I'm comfortable in, because I'm not comfortable in overriding that with it, until I know what's kind of a formally approved tool that's been debated and, so I, and most have done that, by the way, but there's a few that I think are hanging out there where I don't know how, I, I think it's risky to call a thirty-one-year experienced teacher, um, what's the designation, ineffective, before you're comfortable that you have a system that can support that. It's unfair to the teacher, it's unfair all around.
They're gonna be, they're gonna be coming to the, you know, the tenure review. There's a lot of, you know, I've known teachers with many years and tenure, and they're lifting the tenure with these... the tenure with these evaluations and firing them. And so, you know, and many of them I know have been active in voicing, you know, filing grievances or in voicing, you know, a different point of view, which is not being tolerated, which I think reflects a lot of the fear that you hear, people afraid to speak out.
Yeah. All right. Well, that's, I think this is a good plan, and we can be proactive, as John and Kathleen are saying, and Cassandra's committee will take the next step with our team, and we'll move ahead. Thank you. Consent agenda, I think before we do that, we're probably going to have a brief, are we, kind of a brief view of, I think Richard highlighted an issue, and sounded like Linda had a PowerPoint that might cut to the chase on something. And while she's coming up, we will, in debrief today after the meeting, we'll think about how to reform at the grants with a couple of suggestions that came up that I think would make it easier and then also increase the chances that we are targeting these limited dollars. We think we are, and we think we have a system in place, but you might see something we're not seeing. Now, you said PowerPoint, maybe it's not that, it's a handout. Why am I...
It's not going to be a PowerPoint, it's one piece of paper.
The question was, you know, how do we, how do we assign the dollars, how are they given out for the tech readiness grant? I thought that it might be helpful for you to see what we did in 2012, 13, and then in 13, 14. When you look at the criteria packet, you'll note that there are areas where department staff did have input on what the criteria might look like. And so you've got those included in your board item for the criteria. And one of the things that I think came up earlier today was that we could have just taken the grant on its face and given out 25 $2 million grants to 25 spots around the state and had impact on 25 places and still not have a system that will support being ready for all the technological needs that we have in education. So the one piece of this that was done on a per pupil basis was the district participation. And so the districts that chose to participate, and all of them did, I think save one or two, received $10 per student in their coffers to utilize for purchasing technology or software or some piece of the technological package. The rest of this went out in project-based amounts, and so, for instance, if you look down at statewide activities, we spent about 17.5 million. We're not quite at the end of this yet, so that's why you'll see that. On some things, for instance, we needed E-rate, an E-rate network services in project activity one, as well as project management. We have a system coming on board, they started last spring, called M-Tracks, that is going to get a little bit deeper on a building-by-building basis of what the tech needs are and what the tech readiness is in each of those buildings, and we'll be getting those reports on a semi annual basis. And the first one will be ready for us with all schools in December. They'll be doing this work in September and October, and the information will be available to us. That will help us have a much better picture of what the readiness is across the state. And so we thought that was useful, and we've put that system together. Third one there is for PD. Fourth one, one of the big issues is volume purchasing. I saw some of you have iPads today, and there's a going rate on those, and it's usually a pretty fixed price. If you go in and guarantee the vendor that you're going to buy 30,000 of them, the price usually will come down. And so trying to find a way that we can leverage that pricing is something that we're working with there. Urban district technology, last year it was a pretty... How do we help urban districts be technologically ready and exchange data back and forth? This year, that's spelled out in the grant for $5 million for whole school technology. What does it take to put a whole school technology piece in place? That was legislatively mandated. Data system integration, how do we get all of the student information systems to talk to each other? And so that's what that piece is about. And then some special projects. This year, I'm kind of excited about the one this year. We're building a sandbox, as you know, we begin our online assessments at third grade, but you don't want to put a third grader in doing that without having had some experience earlier in their educational career. And so we're building a sandbox for K-2 teachers to be able to use, to take their kids in when they feel that it's right to do some little assessment sorts of projects, so that they'll, teachers will understand what it looks like, and kids will have had an experience in it before they actually go into a higher stakes testing environment. So that kind of gives you a picture of what we've done and how they're awarded.
Good. Thanks, guys. Thank you so much. Okay, with that in mind, consent agenda, is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved by John, is there support? Support by Dan. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
In looking at the minutes, something about voting, actually. I noticed that one of the motions that we voted on last month that we were here, there were four yes and four no's. So that's a tie. Now, do you have the authority or the privilege of voting and...
No. Thank goodness.
I'm doing a tie vote, so how do we take care of tie votes?
It fails.
It fails.
Well, I would say that it passes then the other way, if I am a yes.
It doesn't pass if it's...
It only passes with a majority.
Yeah.
Okay, I tried.
Duly noted.
Okay, thank you. And thank God I don't have a vote. Comments by state board of ed members, I know Dan mentioned this might be a place for...
Five things.
I had a question on grant, on one of the grants, let me see if I can pop it back up. There was some sort of money and funding for a school that went, for the schools that were absorbing a high school that went out between June 1st and June 30th of 2013.
Is that for Albion High School?
Yes.
Why is it for Marshall? It's for Marshall. So was there any effort to do the same for like the surrounding districts of Buena Vista or Inkster?
Wendy?
And why not?
I couldn't speak to the decision of the legislature. I mean, that was something that was added in a supplemental as a special project, and it was a priority of someone in the legislature, and it managed to find its way in there.
Someone for Marshall, I assume?
Chase Bolger.
Yeah, Chase Bolger.
Oh, isn't he, his district?
Is it Marshall? Oh, well, that explains it.
So there was support for help in that.
As long as it was equitable and fair.
Yeah. You know, in a way, I agree with the spirit of your question, and hopefully we can, I fear there's going to be more of this, and as that happens, hopefully we can look back to this and say, if we supported that there, legislator leaders, don't we need to support that everywhere? I think right now, well, I think that's an argument we don't want to not have in our... Yes, sir.
I noticed, too, that there was the grant for, I think, to help Ypsilanti Will run in their merger process, and it does make sense, I mean, we should never subsidize failure, but it does make sense when we see transitions like Inkster and Buena Vista to think about costs to help, we're particularly interested in helping students as an ease into new, and assisting the districts, I guess, that receive a sudden burden of students or programs that they need to use.
You know, and with that in mind, I should give a shout out to Wayne Race, who I used to be superintendent, and Saginaw Intermediate, that are, they're covering a lot of this. They're, to me, it really is a very inspirational might be strong, but thoughtful way for ISDs to start seeing, they have a role to, you know, maybe not like what happened, but when it happens, how are we going to make it best for the kids that are involved there? And I think they stepped right up and are reallocating a lot of their own funds to do what you're describing. Yes, sir.
So back to the Oakman-Davis conversation. One, two, three. So with folks' permission, maybe I'll just go through all four.
Yeah, great.
Before you said five.
I did, but that's four.
Or were you eliminating one?
Yeah. That one you crossed out, Cassandra, then.
Was able to do some combining. So first, so maybe it is five, just because I wanted to...
I know it!
You had to attempt to say.
I want to acknowledge...
But one is mine, one is mine, so it's really four.
All right, thank you, thank you, Lou Bang. Just want to acknowledge the folks who took the time to come up and share their perspective on what's a very difficult emotional, hard issue, obviously. And I don't know that, I want to dive, at least initially, into the kind of what to do about Oakman, other than, although I'm sure others will, and perhaps we should, I don't know, other than your suggestion, Mike, which was to ask the special ed division to ensure that the other schools are ready for those students, which I think is an entirely appropriate function for the state to play. So I want to note my support for that. But aside from that, it seems to me that there are kind of three policy-level issues lurking in the background here that I want to surface, I want to make sure that they're surfaced. Maybe they're obvious for everybody, but I don't want to just be explicit about it. One is, just as, decisions about school closure and, to me, school opening, and so this is consistent with some of the charter debates that we've had at the table, but decisions about school opening and closures, I think, should be made largely on the basis of school quality. I understand Richard's caveat about the difficulty around defining quality, and it's different for different parents, and I completely get that. That having been said, I still believe that there are some baseline kind of foundational elements that all of us would consider. It would allow us to come to some general understanding about what a quality school environment, educational environment, looks like and is. And I think it's ridiculous that, as a state, we allow decisions to be made about new schools opening or what schools close without requiring that the primary consideration in those decisions be quality. It just doesn't make any sense to me that we don't have that policy in place as a state. And so I would love to see us recommend that language in the form of some legislative policy that the state adopt. I don't think it's defend, I don't, I can't imagine, aside from Richard's complaint, which I understand, although in the end disagree with, I can't think of a compelling argument to the contrary around this issue. I mean, you can't tell me, when the purpose of the institution is to educate kids, that the quality of the building matters more than the quality of the instruction going on in the building. If that's the case, fix the building. Like, don't close the school. It just, our response to the situation just doesn't make any sense to me. So that's number one. By the way, in this case, so just based on the work of the organization that I work for, Davis Aerospace is one of the top 10 schools in the city. It's a good school by just about any measure, and a very unique place to boo. I don't know, I've been to go lightly, but I don't, you know, there probably is little doubt that the impact of moving away from the space that is so uniquely tied to kind of the aerospace industry will have some impact on student learning there. The other thing I would note here is, and this is all consistent with the quality matters first, Durfee and Noble, our research suggests, and I don't know Oakman, we didn't evaluate schools that are primarily serving students with special needs and so on, but Noble is an F school, frankly, in this other work, and Durfee is a D school.
Henderson is another school, Henderson.
I didn't look up Henderson, so I don't know, but just based on, I took the time to look, not great alternatives. Now, that's a larger problem in the city, right? We have a lot of schools that aren't great alternatives, frankly, but the point here is that decisions about quality, about opening and closing should be made, I think, on the basis of quality. And I think it's high time that the state had a policy in place that required that be the primary consideration. Look, if we're going to make it the primary consideration, student achievement in evaluating teachers, teacher performance, it should be the primary consideration in whether or not you close or open a new building. It's just, to me, that's basic. Second suggestion, once again around state law and policy, has to do with data backpacks. So one student mentioned, I think it was the young lady, that, or maybe it was a, I don't remember who it was, but somebody, one of the folks testifying mentioned that it was, they were having a lot of difficulty getting the records for their students from DPS for the Mumford students at the EAA. I've heard that complaint before, not necessarily about those two institutions, but just generally, as kids move around in Detroit between charter and DPS and EAA schools, the data doesn't typically follow them. If, in fact, we're going to have a portfolio system of schools, or a marketplace system of schools, or whatever the language is you want to call it, and I'm staying out of the politics of what's right and what's wrong there, but if you're going to have anything like that where kids move around, the data has to follow the kids. That's just basic, like, it can't work if the data doesn't follow students. And we need state law that requires that school districts transfer all student data to the new school of record within blank weeks after the student moves. That's just, otherwise, the system will never work well. Tied to that, we really need to double down our efforts, I think, on statewide data systems. The National Center on Education Statistics, which I think a colleague of ours knows well, a few years ago, in 2009, 10, kind of benchmarked all the states' data systems against each other, and we were, I think there were only five or six states that were worse than us in terms of our statewide longitudinal data system. And so, and I know that a lot of work has gone into that, I just think, I want to publicly kind of say, let's push harder, we got to, you know, we have to improve that work as well. Last point here, and that is on the issue of school closings. So I get that there's this emergency manager issue lurking here as well, and I do think that governance matters. I hear Michelle, and we talked about it a little bit on the car ride up today and so I don't want to dive into that, although others might want to, and perhaps I'll make comments on that later if we end up getting back into it, but it does seem to me that it would make sense to require all local schools, whether it's a, of all governance types, to hold hearings around school closure. Like, that probably is such a difficult, emotional, hard issue, and does impact the fabric of neighborhoods and communities so significantly that I think requiring public hearings be held on the issue of school closures is probably not too much to ask.
No matter governance.
Yeah, it doesn't matter the governance.
That would get at the issue of an EM would be required to have hearings.
Yes, the legislative committee's got some work to do here.
Yeah, I'm sorry to, I think those are probably random with you.
For 2013, 14, the Dan Plan, I like it.
Yeah. Can I, do you have any of you guys, but when we just, I, I can't even get it out today, but any comments? Because some of the data stuff, there's a little bit of progress that we should talk about and maybe build on. The transcripts, sir.
So there are, for high schools, they are now working on doing electronic transcripts, but that's relatively young activity that the state's undertaking at this point. There are certain things that we hold at the state level, but there are a lot of things that are held at the local level that really need to follow the kids. We can transfer state test scores, we can transfer some of the things that we have here, the demographics, the kinds of things that we control here, but a lot of the stuff, unlike many other states where there's a centralized data system, where those things follow the kids automatically because the state holds the data, things are typically held at the local level here, and it does make the transfer more difficult. A lot of the things, and that is exacerbated by so many local school districts having a different data system, so that when they transfer one to the other, it's not just as simple, let's hand the records over electronically. Extraction, transformation, loading into a new system is really difficult work.
And we do have Linda's checking on the exact timing, the CA 486, is that right? Sixty. CA 60 is the form that's supposed to go with the kids. And so we're looking at, so your point about we should have a requirement that it goes the next number of weeks, I think there is a requirement that it goes in X amount of time. What that amount of time is and how much it's happening clearly is the question, and that's been obvious. So just to kind of let you know that I, we're not, not that that's not supposed to be happening now, but something's falling down in implementation, I think, is what we need to...
So why don't we, we'll find out in debrief maybe later today, what is the is, what is is, and then we'll go, and I still think there's a lot of merit to the board being proactive with required statements. And even if we had this in place, doesn't mean, well, if we had it in place and they're just not, maybe without any malice, but just not meeting timelines, that's one issue that we can get proactive on in the department. But if there's not even an appropriate requirement, or it's out so far that, I think, Dan, you had a suggested time, and, you know, in the clear, in the clean electronic world, it could be like that, you know, if we had, you saw from what Linda projected with the technology, that's what one of these was, is to try to have the systems talk to each other. It's all part of this kind of mosaic to get to that point. You looked like you were.
That was the point I was going to make, the other piece is it's dependent upon a district making a request for the records, and that then coming into the new district at the new school, or the old school, and saying, please send the records, and then that group bundling them up electronically, or.
Linda, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
I couldn't hear you, you blocked by Joseph. Sorry about that, Joseph.
Just a part of the system is that currently, you have, the new student goes in, they enroll. Now, the district where they enrolled, in the building where they enrolled, has to make the request of the old school, say, please send the records. And that gets sent up, and imagine this time of year when you've got all kinds of kids moving around. So the request gets sent over, and then either electronically eventually, or now, in the bundle that comes over, all of that has to be ferreted out of another system, put into some sort of an envelope, or electronically, and then sent to the new system, and then put in. And so what we get into is this whole, who asks and who gives, and at what kind of timing. Mike's right, it's something we should pay attention to, because we get kids who have, know, we don't know that they have IEDs and they've come into our building and our district, and we haven't taken the proper action, so.
And you know, with the Dan's point on that first item he mentioned with this, that if it turns out it's just not being enforced, we could have a strategy we'll share in the mid-month report, but if it's beyond that, like, and it doesn't take away from these other requireds that she mentioned as policy, and this, I think this is an appropriate role.
I was just trying to understand, is the situation that SEPI needs to be built out a lot more and could include a lot more data that we would have instantly, and/or there's all this local data that rightfully is kept at the school, but it's just incompatible and not transferred, and we need to make it more transferable, or both of those things?
You've got some of both in there. The issue is that there are, there are other states where the state data systems hold a lot more data, and the transfer of electronic information can happen instantly with what is held by the state.
And not only does it hold more data, but it's a transactional, real-time system. Ours is not currently a transactional, real-time system. It's submitted in certified collections throughout the year. So other states do more of a, if you pull it on Monday and say, how many kids are here, it's one number, and if you pull it on Tuesday, it's another number, that is not how our system is. So it's both, it would need to collect more, and it would need to collect it in more of a real-time iterative, which is also part of that student management system at the local level talking up to the state, which it currently it's, there are so many local systems that it would be hard to build that transactional system. So it's a little bit of both, didn't mean to cut you off.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, the records that they were talking about were their records being asked by an EAA from a public school, a traditional public school.
From DPS.
And they, and they were taking longer period of time, maybe that was intentional. But I taught for many, many years, and any student that came to our building, the secretary right away asked for the records, and he was high copy, he's a whole folder, and they were transferred, so we got them within a few days, so it was not this problem at all. Now, the other thing that Dan alluded to was closing of the schools. Now, in Grand Rapids, they closed, that superintendent that we had before had public hearings, he did all the right thing, had public hearings on this particular elementary school that was very popular, was doing very well, like they described this school to be doing, but he got in his brain that he had to close that school, he closed it. Now, this new superintendent opened that school, and they did the remodeling, and the community and the neighborhood is vibrant, is very happy, and now those students are going to walk to school again. So a lot of schools are closed by stubbornness. Yes, and it's not quality, because that school was quality, a lot of schools were closed just because. Now, the public hearings, yes, it's good to have them, if they're going to listen, but if they have the public hearings, and the neighborhood was telling them, the community, the leaders, the parents, the children, everybody was saying, please don't close this school, da-da-da-da. Oh, no, I'm going to close it, I'm the authority here and I know the best. So a lot of mistakes were made like that, but a lot of people do go through all the process that we're talking about, and still doesn't help, because the superintendents think they know it all in many cases.
President Company, thank you. Now, I had to go from 17 to 15 elementary schools when I was a local superintendent, and we had a task force, every school was represented on it, it went for a full year. A full year. And, you know, I think if I remember this right, at least one of the two that was closed, pretty much both of them, but one said, that's the right decision, and helped take the heat for that closure because they saw the logic of whatever that was at the time. You know, I, this is really good stuff, and I, there, one more level of complexity is you, it still supports the spirit behind it. You could have the quality school stay open, you close the school that's of lesser quality, and transfers and other things that occur don't mean it's the same school. It's still largely the same school, so the vision behind that, I still think outweighs that complexity. But you could literally have 25% of a different crew there, and the culture had been built on the teachers that were there, who'd been working together. But having said that, it's still going to be the majority in most cases, and why not start with the quality school first and let the other stuff fall, you know, as it may?
Better shot at success.
And I think, you know, my experience with a lot of teachers that might not be perceived to be bringing quality in their school, it's when they get an environment and have a new start where they see a different vision and a new quality, they rise to the occasion. They can be pulled down by, I'm not, I don't want to fault the print, but, you know, I've had experiences where you can tell later, it's a principal that was more responsible for the culture that wasn't productive. You know, get out of that environment, and suddenly your teacher that's been, you know, bounced in or seniority in whatever it is, is suddenly stepping up. But I, I think this is really a smart discussion, because we talk about quality so much, and then you look at this, and it's kind of like we're, we're missing the main piece here, Kathleen.
I think the points that Dan raises are very valid, and I remember when Robert Bob was the EM, EFM, I guess it was, and then, and he was closing schools right and left. He was closing some of the best schools in the city, and we, after he came here and talked to us, we made a recommendation to him, we, the board, that he base it on closed, not to close schools that are the top quality schools, and he should use that as a criterion, as the criterion. But he did it anyway, I mean, he didn't, he didn't pay any attention. You talk about superintendents think they know, EMs think they know everything, and they have the authority to do everything and not pay attention to anybody, and it's very detrimental. I mean, this is not the answer to, to improve the schools. We've got to do something different, this is not a solution. I mean, Detroit, you know, one of the things they say about making a school better is having some stability. And stability in the, stability in the schools, stability in the leadership. Detroit has had, what is it, 10 people in 10 years to run the schools. It's just destructive. It is absolutely the wrong way to go, and here we keep doing it. I think that maybe that's something, an issue that we should look at, is how to make a, what do we do to help school districts? The EM is not the answer, I don't think. And the idea of closing schools, one of the people here today said, it's destroying neighborhoods, and it is. Once the school is gone, there is no neighborhood.
Yes, ma'am. Lupe and then Michelle.
You put any of us to perform a surgery, heart surgery, any of us, we're not equipped. We do, that's not our calling, and that's what they're doing in the schools.
Doctors.
They put, they put people that know very little about education, have never taught a day in their lives, to run our schools, how are they going to be successful?
All right, all right, yes, ma'am.
Well, you know, and maybe I'll chalk this up to being new, all right? So I'm trying to understand about the governance, you know, in Detroit. So they have an emergency manager that's appointed by the governor, that's, so how, so the point about, is there local control, and who is, who is to be held accountable? And when I say accountable, I mean also legally. So if there's an obligation to provide a certain level of education, like we have a case going right now, what's to say that this will also rise, you know, anytime you have an emergency manager, and you have, and you have a school board that's been wiped out of most of its authority, why shouldn't the state be held responsible? If they want the authority, they should take the responsibility. You can't, it's like playing both sides, you know, oh, no, it's local control, but, but there's nobody there, you know? It's, so who do you hold, you know, and it always, I've always had the saying that people are often for personal accountability, except when it's them. And so it's like that to me, it's like, teachers should be held accountable, principals should be held accountable, but the people who are implementing these policies, and it's coming from the state, why aren't they? Yeah, the laws that are forcing this, why aren't they held accountable? And I don't underst, so, and I think that's why.
And all of us are named defendants in that suit, so.
Right.
They are being held accountable.
If I may, just to that point, I mean, I still put in, to the discomfort of other folks in state government, I put in my MDE budget, every year, 200 million, reimburse Detroit for what I think you can make a case that over 12 years, we had 10 of the 12, we, the collective we, and therefore should think about that as an, you know, not the whole burden there, but I think you could make, I think we have made and can continue to make a case that 200 million should go into that allocation for them to reduce their deficit because of that very thing you're bringing up. But how do you shirk, you know, it's different administrations there, Grantholm and, Governor Grantholm and Governor Snyder, so this isn't political to say that. But you can't get, because it goes all the way back, really, to.
Engler did it with, you know.
With.
Adamany, David.
Well, Adamany and Ken, Ken Burnley, and then it went back to the, back to the board, maybe, for two years, and so there's been a mismatch of policies that, but I think one could, if you stepped back and wanted to be fair, say of that deficit, how much of it was state-owned in one capacity or another, and should be reimbursed. So we put it in every year, and, you know.
But just to your point, where is the democratic political accountability for those districts?
And even the legal, like, in high school.
What about who is?
So, I mean, it's clear in this case, when you have an, a local school board has that responsibility with whatever other, you know, responsibilities we all have, who set conditions for local school boards. But when you have an emergency manager, it was in place because there's emergency manager law that creates a dynamic whereby the governor appoints, but the legislature approves that law, so I would argue the political accountability then does lie with the legislature and the governor, who has to execute, but both, because they basically took away the democratic accountability under certain circumstances, and to place it somewhere else. So that's where the accountability has to lie, and I think that's not inconsistent with some of the notions of what, who's responsible for these sorts of situations.
You're talking about in terms of elections, but also I think in terms of.
Political accountability matters, I mean, I really believe in it, so for example, when, I think it's often healthy when a mayor is willing to put up their hand and say, I do want to be held accountable for the schools in my community. I am a democratically elected person, it's really hard to hold a local school board accountable just because it's multi-headed and you don't know them as well, where it's easier to hold a mayor accountable. Most mayors aren't willing to take that risk, Daley did in Chicago, I think the guy in DC.
Bloomberg did in New York.
Right, right, so, I mean, that's just locating the political accountability. Who is the democratically elected entity that is responsible for this, you know, our education? It could be a school board, it could be a mayor, if they take it, and in this case, it's a legislature and with a governor appointing who have that, taken that responsibility.
But that's not local control. Then why don't we have some influence, is my question? If it's not a matter of local control, then why don't, doesn't this board or the state department have more influence over these decisions?
The law just didn't provide it, you know, I mean, that would have been good, but the law didn't provide it. And it's that position, yes, ma'am.
What I had to say is, well, we can say whatever we think it should be, it has to be written somewhere. And that's how they're going to say, well, no, you guys are the ones that are whatever. So it has to be written somewhere that once the state and the legislature say they're going to have an emergency manager, we are responsible, but where is it written?
In the Constitution.
No, the emergency managers are not in the Constitution.
I know, no, but the Constitution overrides the, I would say, I would argue.
Places responsibility on the state.
On the board, and it overrides.
The state board is supposed to be supervising all public education, so that shouldn't claim everybody. Stuff that's under the EMs too, we really have no say.
We have the same say as we do over any and all other school districts.
And it's not the state board, actually, I mean, if you read, the state, the state has responsibility for delivering, whatever the language is, a free and public education, right? The state board has particular responsibilities.
To supervise all public education.
Right, surround advising, da-da-da-da, whatever the language is, I don't remember exactly what it is.
Leadership and supervision and recommend the finances.
Now, we're a, we're a part of the state, right? And, I mean, how you, you're getting into all sorts of legalities there, but the state is technically accountable. And that's what allows, I think, the state legislature to pass a law that creates an emergency manager, right? Because the state is accountable for delivering a free and public education. When you have a district that's not going to open, the state is constitutionally obligated to act, one could argue. I just want to go back to this other, I'm sorry, I interrupted you, go ahead, finish your point.
We can go back to that, I think we, this is something we have to think about, I think, and maybe make some recommendations on, to do something more effective than what we've got. I mean, in Muskegon Heights, if you look at, Muskegon Heights, they appointed an EM, he picked MosaicA. It's a, it's a failure, from what I understand, the special ed kids are not getting service. And I don't know if the Department has investigated that, but from what I've read in clippings and everything, it looks like they're, they're being short-changed completely. And the MosaicA hasn't got, didn't have the resources, didn't have the know-how, didn't have the, didn't know what it was getting into, which was a bad thing in the first place. And this is not a solution, we have to come up with a different way of dealing with this kind of a problem.
You know, it's a double-edged issue, I think, watching this kind of the last few years, because I still admire Carla Scott for trying to get one more vote. Had she been able to get one more vote, which she worked hard at, and other board members there, this never would have happened. They would have implemented that plan, they just, remember, it just stalled. And so I think what it has done is, we'll never quite know this, but Carol and I have talked about this, there's, I think, large numbers of districts that have, even with all the problems we have with revenue and the rest, have made decisions on their own and made tough decisions in some cases so that they can hold on to that local control. And not, you know, we don't know how many would have been there if they weren't saying, we're going to do this because the alternative to us doing this is, you know, it's going to happen, it's going to start the process. So whether, whether the process, the law that are in place should be amended, I would agree with that, by the way. But that doesn't mean that there isn't an ultimate way to keep the control, and it would have been one vote, just one vote that day. I remember we left shocked, I kept thinking, like, because in those days, I'm happy to be out of this, but in those days, we had to at least start the process once they couldn't get the vote to implement the plan, and then it went to Governor Grantholm and Robert Bob, and kind of the rest is history. So we, the thing, if I had to add one piece to this, when we maybe formalize it in Cassandra's committee somewhere, is we don't have an exit strategy in the law. The law doesn't prescribe enough, so when is enough to come out? What's that mean? We're trying, I'll give you an example, we're working hard on this, and I don't have anything to say yet because we haven't figured this totally out, but, you know, here we are by the. this totally out, but, you know, here we are by the, in roughly in sometime this later fall, needing to talk about what I think will be a very small number of schools that just aren't making the progress and are eligible for E A A. What we're struggling with is what's, what's the exit issue related? It's not clear. And we have to have one, that like, because right now, I feel like we're in a, in a morally, or that's, maybe that's not exactly where, but we're in a defensible position of saying, if they're improving, we're not putting them in. That's one reason I felt the need to respond a little bit earlier, that we're not putting 5% in. I mean, 5% is a couple 100, and at most, it's going to be a very small number. But, but that's because we can defend that what others are doing, who've been in exactly the same spot with the exactly same money, and yet a couple just aren't. But we want to be able to be in a position, so what is it that they finally do to say, you're not in there anymore? You know, and that's, these are, these are the problems with some of the laws that have been thrown in. They're thrown in with an entrance strategy, they're not thrown in with an exit strategy.
But that also raises the question, I mean, it's probably too soon to, to know this, which means I think it's too soon to put more schools in, but are the E A A schools improving?
Well, I mean, it's one year of data, so we won't, we won't, yeah, I, but I.
But that tells you, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I saw Eileen waving her.
There's progress, actually.
I was just going to say that this is such a difficult situation, but we don't have the boots on the ground. We can see things that we know could be better. We don't have the ability to analyze who would do that better, and we don't have the ability to implement it. And the idea of being tied into this in a decision-making process in which we're not competent, because we're not a local school board, we are a policymaking board, and then being held responsible for actions that don't work is terrifying. You know, I, I don't like the system as it is, and I wish, my, my husband's very fond of saying, this advice is worth exactly what you paid for, paid for it, nothing. But I do wish that there are a way that we could advise. I just don't know, under current legal requirements, whether we can advise and not be held responsible for things that are out of control.
Yes, sir.
Two other quick points that I'll make and then I'm done. The first is that maybe one other potential thing for the legislative committee to take up, so I've long maintained, I could be just crazy, and I'm sure I'll take some heat for saying it, but I don't know that a sort of ed governance model is the end-all, be-all. And I don't know that that's even true at the state level, quite honestly. I don't know, so states across this country have different models. Some are elected state boards, some are appointed boards, some are, I mean, just different models. I mean, there are, I don't know, four or five different ones, if I remember the NASB document that I looked at a number of years ago correctly. I don't know why we couldn't offer the same thing to local government here in Michigan. In other words, why does every, why is everybody using a board? Like, it seems to me that one thing that we should consider is a state law that allows local, local communities to decide their own form of governance. Some might prefer mayoral control, some might prefer an elected board, some might prefer something like, there should be a laundry list of four or five different options, as long as it's manageable in terms of reporting back to the department and the information that the department needs, you know, in order to hold those entities accountable. I don't know why we wouldn't allow for multiple governance types. I, I, I've never quite understood that, and.
Can Marty run with that? That will help get some folks off my back.
Sure, yeah, sure. So absolutely, I'm like.
School Board Association, look over here.
It's at least a conversation that I feel like we should be having.
You know what, I think in fairness to the School Board Association, they are trying to convene some discussions along those lines, even within their own, and, and I, I, we're hoping to be asked and would, if they, if they would request a school board member, state board member, you sound like a perfect.
I would love to. I mean, I, I really believe different communities will have different desires around what their governance looks like. Some might want a board, and some might want a single person who they, you know, a mayor, who they can vote out if things aren't going the way they want it to go. That's one. Second is, I do want to know, I mean, I, I think they're, they're A and B on this point. And this is not to apologize for decisions that D P S is making that, that may not be in the best interest of kids. There are, so there are a number of districts around the state that have just not managed their money well. And do, kind of, it's not an issue of state-run board, you know, is accountable for $200 million worth of the deficit and so on. And like, this, something has to be done around that. And I'm pleased that the state's now moving toward an earlier warning system to try and get ahead of that, so we don't end up in a situation where more emergency managers are needed. I also think we need more money for public education, right, which would help resolve some of those issues. But I don't want, I just think it's worth, in other words, there are always two sides to these things. And the flip side here is, we heard from a really impassioned and frankly, very powerful voices today around this issue. Roy Roberts is obviously no longer around. I don't know what, what they were thinking. I mean, as I said earlier, like, when I look at the, what schools are good and so on, it doesn't intuitively make sense to me, but we should hear from Karen Ridgway or whomever at D P S around this probably, and hopefully your team. And we'll, we'll do that.
My name is Cassandra, then Michelle.
So I, you know, I keep hearing this, the argument that local boards aren't making tough decisions, and that's why they're all finding themselves, I know, I know, but others are. And that's why they're finding themselves in these situations. And, you know, the reason, I think, it, that may be true for a small subset. But the real reason that this is happening is because we have a funding model based on headcount, and we have a declining headcount. And so I looked up SEPI numbers, in the last 10 years, we've, the state of Michigan's lost 183,000 students, and in the exact same time, added 110 net new schools. And there was just an article in the paper the other day about Buena Vista, and hey, they're shutting down, but within a 10-mile radius, there's 40 charter schools. Well, maybe that has something to do with why Buena Vista can't operate anymore. You know, so we need to, I mean, this, this headcount versus, let's add more schools. Next year, we're going to have, what, 34, 35 new schools, even though we continue to have a declining headcount. I think our whole strategy for school, public education in the state, is so flawed that there is no way we can continue. And we talk about a governance model, I mean, the reality is, we have elected boards being replaced by non-elected boards operating schools.
And we've created a parallel system with unelected boards.
That's why we got to fix it.
Mostly private management.
But I think we need to, we need to acknowledge the fact that schools find themselves in deficit, not because they're terrible with numbers and because they can't add. They find themselves in deficit because this year, they had 4,000 students, well, 400 students, and next year, all of a sudden, they have 350. And there goes the budget. And that's the problem. And it's going to continue until we figure this out.
Yeah, you know, we, if I might just add to that, one reason that, yeah, I've said this at a meeting I was invited to, as I said, I don't know what meeting, I'm not invited to anymore, but invited to a meeting, and Craig would attest to this, and I said in front of the governor that which ones are coming into landing as deficit districts, and how do you get ahead of it? Respectfully, tell me how many are going to be going to K-12 that's, that's doing a lot of advertising right now.
Right. Or for laptops, or offering iPads.
So if we could answer that question, which we can't, I mean, it's a whole other variable now that's much even bigger than 30 other schools, because you just don't know what the universe of that is.
And Connections is starting to advertise too, so.
And that's not to, I don't want to, whoever's, I'd say there isn't a possible role for that, but the predictability now is even a hundredfold more.
That's right.
Tough to predict. And then districts who, in good faith, I mean, I was actually trying to give a shout-out to school boards a few minutes ago by saying, most of them are fixing this, and I think it's like, we, we, we need to do what we need to do. But they're in a tremendous burden right now with the exact thing you're describing. So I appreciate the board, and I kind of independently also said at the time of that legislation that we needed to phase this in over time, so that, okay, we're not Neanderthals, there might be a place for this, but not overnight, so that you just can't predict the overall model, the old moral stability, rather.
Yeah, that's my turn.
It was Michelle, and then it was Dan.
Just a couple of things. I just wanted to add to what Cassandra was saying, because it, it, it is pretty mind-boggling. But there's also the fact that a lot of these other schools, the E A A schools, the charter schools are opening up, and they're really wreaking havoc on the pension funds for the teachers and creating this, you know, the, increasing the payments, nobody's paying in, less than those people are paying in for the people that retired. So that's when Kathy and I went out to Kalamazoo, met with the superintendent there, you know, he's saying, you know, even though they're having, the fastest-growing district, they're still having cuts. A lot of it's because of the way the system is set up, and I think to try to undermine the pension for the teachers, which, I don't understand why a teacher can't get a decent pension, but anyway, so that's one thing I wanted to just add. The other thing was, on the, with regard to Oakman, I don't know if we, if there's some way we could reach out to the new E M. Now, part of the, what I understand is that they sold the building. And they sold the building either right before they told the parents, I mean, it was just completely, complete disregard to these parents. And so I don't know if there's some way we could write a letter, or somebody could meet with the new E M., or if we could send, you know, I don't know what this, if there's anything that can be done to save that school. And I'm told it was a local church who bought the school. And I'm also told, as I understand it, that, that there are some rights, at least supposedly that, written into law, that the D P S board has, school board has, that were not followed. They were, things were supposed to be run through them, but, you know, so what if it's on paper, if you have the power, right? So they, it was, is, that, there's some questions about whether that was disregarded or not. So I don't know what can be done at this late date, but I think, and out of respect to the parents who came here, if there was some way that we could make a more formal or more follow-up on this by trying to talk to people, or at least convey their message in some way.
So I said, when, I think you were still visiting.
Oh, okay, oh, so I'm repeating a great idea.
The Department looking at just the special ed services, it is, I think, appropriate for the board, and I'd be happy to do it on the board's behalf, to at least reach out to Martin and communicate what we heard, and encourage him, and make sure they are paying full attention to issues and concerns that are being raised, which we heard directly from. And B, it's always licensed for an individual board member to sort of facilitate attention to an issue from someone like Martin as well. You know, we, are you really on top of this? I care about it, so we could do both things, I think.
Would it, would it be worth it to try to reach out to the governor's office on it, or is that just completely out of the?
Craig was here for a lot of that.
He wasn't, he left.
He left in the middle of it.
Yeah, he left after the first speaker, I think.
So I think you just, we just have to ask them.
Would be asking, Jack, if there's some way to save the school, or is that just long gone? Is that?
I, I think the appropriate thing is, we heard a lot of information and heartfelt concern and testimony. We want to make sure that you are, as the person in charge, paying as full attention to issues, concerns that are being raised, as, as is warranted. I mean, that, just a little reminder to please make sure you're listening hard and, and appreciating what these folks are saying and taking it seriously. I think that's what we can do appropriately, if others agree.
I so move.
I agree.
I so move.
Move by Lupe. Supported by, supported by Dan.
I don't know that the governor, they're going to say, well, it's being handled by the emergency manager, and he's on top of it.
Yeah, but Martin is the authority.
We have a motion.
I'm sorry, what is the motion?
You guys wanted me to take control here, I'm trying to, but we have a motion which would be.
Yeah, and copy the governor.
The gist of Johns. I would, if appropriate, I'd be happy to co-sign that with you, if that's the right thing to do.
Will you C C. Mr. Ruff, too, please?
Yeah, yeah.
And supported by Dan.
Should we go to the governor as well, you say?
Yes.
Craig Ruff.
He doesn't hurt.
Because I think, well, further discussion?
No, I think of, that's fine.
Maybe they'll fix something that's wrong.
No, no, no.
Not just the emergency manager, send it to everybody in the school.
My motion doesn't include the emergency, all of them, just one.
Yeah, if I may participate in discussion, even though I can't vote, is I think the value of doing that is, they did take the time to be here.
Yeah.
And it, it distinguishes it from the hundreds of other schools that have been closed this year, by the way. So if we're not careful, we'd have to try to analyze every one of them.
We did this with another school, once too, we did it with Guyton School.
Right. But I think that's, the others, the others that have been closing, I think, could fall into the discussion we eventually have to Dan's point about policy and requirements on everything from hearings to quality, and then feel more comfortable, short of an analysis of the 200 that were closed this year, or the 58, or whatever it was. It would be at the, it would be in the spirit of what Dan said. But, so any further discussion on the motion? Yes, ma'am.
I'm not sure if you want to include this in the letter, but I mean, you might also want to make it a point to let them know that the expectation is that these schools that they're sending these kids to are appropriate and adequately fit for these, these kids.
It's not only the physical.
I know, absolutely.
Stan's point about the D and the F.
It's the whole size of the school, and the fact that the school has all these difficult kids apparently, and gangs, and these kids are going to be intimidated.
Exactly.
Well, I think, we, yeah, we can include that issue among many other issues that were brought to our attention, and, you know, these folks were looking for help from their democratically elected representatives who are us, and it's appropriate for us to make sure those who are making decisions on their behalf are paying attention to these issues.
You can also C C. the, the, what is it, the C P A or the lead parent of the group, so they know that we do, that we do something.
This is more who's the chairman of the group.
Or if we could maybe even copy every person we have there.
Or him, or somebody.
Mary Ann, Mary Ann will get the word out.
Copy Dr. Petroni. All right. So any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion on the motion? Any fur?
Call the question, call the question.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same?
You know, I just wanted to mention that that school, the Oakman School Building itself is a handsome building. I have been to a lot of schools in Detroit, it is the best-looking school in the city.
We're going to try, we're going to try Kathy.
My closing point, so I agree with my colleague, Cassandra, and I just want to make the point that I hope that that is, re-energizes our efforts to try and move the finance conversation forward, I mean, let's figure out how to make this system work, right? The solution here is, you can't put Genies back in the bottle, and it's like, let's figure out how to make this system work. Put weighted funding forms in place, let's, whatever we got to do to make this system work for kids, let's make it work for kids.
And I'd like you to consider a sales tax on service.
Income tax, no income tax, at a progressive rate.
That would be ideal. Which one do you think, which one of the two would we have a greater chance, maybe?
I just want to thank Ms. Marilyn for the cards that she provided for us and all, everything she does on behalf, and also all the staff. I love working with you.
Well, thank you. They, they, we appreciate you also, and Marilyn does have your best interests in mind. She's always kind of watching for stuff like that, so.
Kathleen has.
We need a motion. We need, no, we need a motion to change the.
Kathleen has something.
We need a motion to change the December meeting first, and then we can follow.
Kathleen has something she'd like to say.
I have a real, I have a question about the E A A. And that is that I understood the E A A was to handle the low-performing schools, takes the school with the kids, they're in the school. This E A A in Detroit is recruiting additional students to come in, and why do they do that? They have the students that are in the school, that were in the school and would go to that school. Why do they have to recruit other students? What gives them the authority to create, recruit other students?
Part of making the system work. Every school in Detroit is under-enrolled. I'm probably exaggerating a little bit, but they're probably only, you can count them on one hand, they're actually full.
Count on one hand what?
The number of schools that are actually financially healthy, because they are at or near full.
The population.
Oh.
Nobody does, right? And when you start a reform district, when you start a reform district and you don't
district and you don't fund it, you ask for philanthropy to fund it, then, I mean, this is what happens. Like, I, it's, we have, we have all sorts of good ideas as a state, and we implement them poorly, all too frequently. This is just my.
I don't think they should be allowed to do that.
But I, we often leave frustrated, because there's a lot of things we don't think they should. I would agree with that one, by the way, but it is permissible. They are allowed, it is.
They have the authority to recruit students from other schools, other than what the
Well, aren't they, I mean, devil's advocate, wouldn't we want, to be successful, and you recruit a diverse array of students, including some from maybe better socioeconomic?
Oh, yeah.
The kids are more likely to learn.
Well, that's not what it, that's not to me, like, that's the philosophy.
Turn an ineffective school into an effective school, is to create a more diverse, and attract a more diverse population. I mean, that's what my, the rationale for Ipsy, creating New Tech High and an IB program where Dan's kid is going, is to create, you know, a more effective school that attracts and keeps more people.
I think to Cassandra's earlier point, I.
Without creating EAA, you have less students.
I think to Cassandra's earlier point, I hope part of our discussion when we do this together, as I'm looking forward to it, is also creating some concrete ideas about how to keep your students and attract them. Because some of this is, I just have to say it, some of it is, because I was lucky to have a board that was open to different ways of thinking as a local school board. There are some that, just appropriately, but decry the movement of kids, and don't try to put something in place that could minimize that, minimize the lead. For example, if I'm a local soup again, and I'm worried about K-12 with their fancy-dancy advertising right now, I'd be making sure I had a blended learning model in my own school district right now. I'd be working hard on that.
How do you do that when you have to keep cutting your budget every?
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, I'm not saying, but I'm saying if we don't address that, you know, we have districts.
They have the money, they can.
Think of it as educating.
Of the two districts that were dissolved, one has $14,000 a kid, and one has $10,000 a kid. So I'm not, we have to be careful how we're analyzing that and where the money's been spent, right? And I'm just saying, this is all part of, if we really want to be considered thoughtful on what we give, we've gotta show the full array. Because I don't even, we're still working on, I don't understand fully the difference between why the two that were dissolved, one's $14,000 a kid and one's $10,000. I can make the case from my own history that a lot of the kids that are the, that have the toughest things to overcome, we probably should be spending $25,000 on each one of them. So it's not to say that that shouldn't be there. I'm just, we can't figure out some of the segmented parts of that that make it so different for some districts. Now, some of it is, those that took longer, whether you're there or not, took longer to move to co-pay on insurance, you know, so. And in Inxter's case, it wasn't until the last few months to have any co-pay at all. And that's not saying you should be in favor of it or not, it's just that, for those that did go to co-pay, you hear a lot of districts that resent, I'm just telling the truth here, as I go around, that resent that they've made tough decisions from their point of view to not be in that spot, and other districts didn't, you know.
Will you also look at the exorbitant pay of some of these, you know, you talk about the teachers and not doing this, but I look at the money that's spent at some of these charter schools on these management companies, and the CEOs are making hand-over-fist money.
That's why this.
Ridiculous, you know, and, but yet, you know, I just, I just get so tired of people blaming teachers and being somehow overpaid and overly compensated. It just, it's just.
If I may, every time I've mentioned this, you.
I do, I will, and you will do, and I will continue.
But I want to be on record, I'm not decrying teachers' salaries, I'm just describing how the district next door.
Right.
Did this over time, 5%, then 10%, then 15%, and Inxter did until last month. And if I were a local teacher, I'd be wondering why I wasn't helped to think this earlier.
Do the superintendents pay, too, in some of these public districts?
Absolutely.
And some of the administrators pays, and some of the.
I couldn't agree more, I'm just.
Loaded infrastructure in some of these.
Yeah, but that's.
After the teachers as being overpaid and compensated, that's what I have a problem.
I'm not, I'm truly not. I'm truly not. But I do think I should be, as I am, paying 20% on a co-pay. I do think I should be, and I think that's appropriate.
Move to adjourn, do we need to move?
No, we need, we need the motion to change our December board meeting from.
That's right.
So moved.
Could you repeat it? What is it? Marilyn?
It's. We scheduled the December 10th meeting to Tuesday, December 17th.
So moved.
Support.
By Dan, supported by Cassandra.
I had already supported, I'm sorry, Catherine.
Any discussion?
Lupe can have it.
Guys, it's a change in the board meeting. I know you all agreed, but any discussion?
No.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same?